Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 8th meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have you with us tonight. At this time, Ms. La Magna will review the procedures for our meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the Commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak for the City Commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the Commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under administrative item number 10 are open for public comment and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is a public comment forum, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green forum will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight."
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the August 4th, 2021, regular City Commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Traeger. No questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. At this time, we will address our agenda. If there are any changes, our City Manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, there are two items of requests. Commissioner May has requested that Agenda Item 9D, the accessory dwelling units land development code text amendment, be continued to the November 17, 2021 City Commission meeting. And there were emails sent in from the general public that were sent to your email, so she's asking for that to be continued, and that's up to the elected officials. Also, another item Commissioner Cantu has requested, Item 9J and 10A, be moved to the first items under public hearings. That deals with the veterans components of the agenda due to all of the veterans that are here tonight. So we would entertain two different requests. One, the Commissioner May requests to continue the accessory dwelling unit land development code. And the second one will be for Commissioner Cantu requesting Item 9J and 10A be moved to the first items under the public hearings tonight. Thank you.
Question is, why does that need to be continued to November 17th for the ADUs? What's the reasoning?
Here's what I would do. I would propose that we address that when we get to that item. Because if we want to continue it, then we can just continue it. I do understand the merits, and people have argued that. So let's just decide that when we get to that. And then, unless you guys just want to decide it, no, it doesn't matter to me. But it's usually the way you would do it. Let the item come up and then address it. And then, as it relates to moving the other item up, I certainly hope we would accommodate and do that.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. So what we'll do is, just need a motion and a second to adjust the...
The move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda and a second, a motion from Commissioner Reed, second from Commissioner Cantu. Any additional questions? There are none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Moving on to item number six is the presentations. We have no presentations. Tonight, moving on to item number seven, is a public comments for people addressing the City Commission on items on the consent agenda, and I have no speakers for the consent agenda.
All right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The move.
Second.
We'll take the motion from Commissioner Traeger and the second from Commissioner Reed. No further questions? You have something, Mr. Manager?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. And we're going to take Item 9J first. One speaker for that item. Item 9J is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Veterans Museum and Education Center Public Use Permit. This is a resolution quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving a public use permit for the S. Cornelia Young Memorial Library Building located at 302 Vermont Avenue, authorizing a permitted use for the property, community service uses, as described in the City Land Development Code, repealing all resolutions in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
The move.
Second.
We'll give the motion to Commissioner Cantu, the second Commissioner Henry. Okay, we have a speaker.
And I do have one speaker for 9J, which is Mr. John Nicholson. There's another, I'm sorry, John, before you start, there's another veterans item that's after this, it's going to be 10A, which is what I think you signed up for, Mr. Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grahamview Avenue. I don't oppose this. I'm just asking for clarification from the lawyer. When this was discussed years ago, when it got into really, really, really bad condition, we couldn't do anything about it because we closed the library. The county pulled the library. And the problem with the property was that it was deeded to the city in perpetuity as a library, and that we couldn't do anything else with it other than a library. So, at this point, I don't want to us to assign this to somebody else and then have it bitten a bitus in the butt when somebody, one of the owners of the person that donated, or the relatives, come back and says, "Well, you can't do that. We want our property back, and that 30-year lease is invalid." So, I'm asking the lawyer, at what point did what we discussed years ago change to where we can now lease it out? Thank you.
Would you like me to address Mr. Nicholson?
You're free to address Mr. Nicholson. He brings this up each time the property hears something.
Well, the Cornelia Young Library was deeded to the city around the turn of the century, and it did have, in the deed, a reservation or a restriction that it be for a library use only, or the property would revert back to the heirs of the person donating the property. I forget the name now, but a Colonel in the Army, as I recall. At some point, maybe about five years ago, the city undertook an attempt to locate the heirs because the library use had been abandoned when the county pulled out of operating the library. The city was unable to locate the heirs, and as a result, we followed up with a declaration by the City Commission that that use was being abandoned. Now, the property was vacant for a while. It was taken over by the Coast Guard Auxiliary for a while, and now, of course, moving the veterans in for a museum use. The veterans, as I understand it, may also have some library uses, and so there are a couple issues here. They may actually comply with that deed restriction. Of course, there are no heirs that we could locate that would claim the reverter. And finally, this public use permit is intended to really clarify those issues and, again, declare to the public that the use will be for a public use only. So thereby complying with any sort of public use restrictions.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add, sir?
I do. Thank you. Jim Morris, City Manager. I had the opportunity to visit the existing Veterans Museum facility, and it certainly is a library in many ways in respect to books and exhibits that it has. Secondarily, the Coast Guard use of it is one will relocate to another location, but it has not been a library either. So that we're continuing a use that I think is more specifically related to an activity that would be more like a library. There are many resources for research and so on as it relates to the different wars that have occurred and veterans and so on that have participated, as well as uniforms, exhibits, and so on. And when you think of the purpose ordinarily dedicated to be done by a library, the museum certainly does a lot, if not all, of that work, not to mention other things they do as far as guest lectures and participation. My point would be twofold. One is, if there's a violation that's already occurred by virtue of the Coast Guard use, the declaration the attorney has mentioned addresses that. This moves it back closer to perhaps the original purpose. And finally, thirdly, that hasn't been discussed so far, is the dedication that the group that we have before us has to the community and the efforts that they have, and they're coming back from Holly Hill into Daytona Beach if they do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That was my only speaker for this item.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and we have a great cause. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and take Item 10A, which is City Manager's Office Veterans Museum Lease Agreement Resolution. A resolution approving a lease between the City and Veterans Museum and Education Center, Inc., for property located at 302 Vermont Avenue, in the amount of $10 annually for a 20-year term commencing October 1st, 2021, with an option to renew for a 10-year term, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the lease and providing an effective date.
The move.
You have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Henry.
And I do have speakers on this item, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Jose Rosa, and on deck is Senator Tom Wright.
My name is Jose Rosa. I'm currently the president of the museum. And just to clarify, we are an education center also, and we do have quite an extensive library of movies and books and other items, so it would certainly fit into the library portion. I want to thank, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, all the commissioners, especially Stacy Cantu, that fought so much for us to get this building. We do appreciate it very much. We are very happy to come back to Daytona Beach. We felt we never should have left Daytona, but as things happened, we did go and survive somewhere else. But I'm pretty sure that we will be offering Daytona a wonderful Veterans Museum. If you haven't been there, you need to go because it is probably a standard for Veterans Museum throughout the state. I also want to thank every veteran that's here in this room for their show of support. It means a lot to them, and I know that we will mean a lot to the city. So I thank you all very much. All the veterans here, thank you. All the leaders of all the veterans groups, thank you very much. And the support that we get from our senator and from Ernie, General Ardino, we appreciate that so much. So thank you so much for bringing us back to Daytona Beach where we belong.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Senator Tom Wright, and on deck is Ernie Adino.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for hearing me, Mayor and Commissioners. You know, these guys have been working hard at this museum for a long time, and I too want to just support what you're doing. I think it's a wonderful move to allow them to take advantage of that existing building. You know, in the world's most famous beach, we need to have the world's most famous war museum. Some people in the audience may not be aware that Florida has 20 bases. We have more bases than any other state in our country, and we're second only to Texas, the number of veterans that live in our state. So it's pitting that we have the war museum here that Quanita May, Commissioner May, has been working on for a long time, and now Stacy Cantu is helping us to make this happen. So I just wanted to thank you very much for making this a possibility. I like to support these men and women that are our veterans, and I imagine we'll be looking forward to the day that we'll be helping them move from Holly Hill back to Daytona Beach. So that'll be a great day. And I want to just offer, if the city would like, at some point, I can work with Kevin Tebow, our Secretary of FDOT, and get some signs out on the interstate that say "War Museum" all the way into this area. So if that becomes something you want me to do, I'll be happy to do it. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, veterans.
Hold it, Senator. Is that something that we want?
Appreciate that tremendously.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure we have a consensus. We don't want to have government slow down.
All right. You're the man.
Hundred percent.
I'll get on it for you.
And we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you, sir.
For our veterans especially.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ernie Adino, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to hear this item and consider this item. So I am a 32-year veteran of the Army. I can tell you that I am a very strong supporter of the Veterans Museum moving back to Daytona Beach, and I'll tell you why. It's because our veterans, the example of our veterans, can teach the rest of us a lot about finding meaning in our lives. These are brave Americans who have served purposes much larger than themselves, every minute of every day. Everything subordinates to the accomplishment of that overall mission that binds them all together. There are no politics in the foxhole. Nobody cares where you came from. They only care what you're wearing on your shoulder, and that's camouflage, or that's Army green, or Air Force blue, et cetera, et cetera. And these are people who will defend the values of this country, and then it starts raining on them in the middle of the night, and the situation's vague, and you start running low on ammunition. But they continue to press forward. They are scared like everybody else, but they push through it. They lead lives of great value, and they know it. But their values are values like duty and loyalty to each other, and respect, and selfless service, and integrity, and personal courage. Don't we think those are great values, great lessons to pass on to others? And here we have a glorious example, a Veterans Museum back in Daytona Beach, where many of the members here, the veterans community here, have contributed bits and pieces of their past. Yeah, it's all about finding meaning. It is. Meaning in life is what helps you carry through that great adversity, something much bigger than yourself. And I'll just summarize with this, or I'll end with this, and I'll paraphrase Ronald Reagan, and he said, "Most people go through their lives and they wonder if they ever made a difference in this life." But our veterans don't have that problem. Let's let them help teach the rest of us how to find that great meaning. Thank you for considering this.
Well, thank you.
And our final speaker is Frederick Brown.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Chris and Ridge, Daytona Beach. First of all, I want to thank and especially send the Commissioners to work very hard on this. It is a shame we didn't get a little sooner and have to move things up and back, but it's great to be back in Daytona Beach. We have an excellent opportunity here. This new location, I'm very excited about. I happen to live very near it, so I'll probably spend a lot more time there. So I am looking forward to it. But the opportunity we have across the street, City owns the property on Vermont Road, and one of the biggest problems we have, and I hope that this, everything we've talked about, will bring more people, you know, we're just south of ISB, and the signage is proposed by the Senator, will be excellent. But what I'd like to see us do is use some of that property across the street for the parking that's badly needed. I'd also like to see us put up kind of a gateway entrance to it, and then we can put the sign pointing right across the street. And that would be, put the Six Flags poles of the Six Branches of Service there. We now have Space Force, or the half of my group. And, you know, with a nice sign there pointing out to where the museum is. Because far too often, you can drive right past it. I know a previous location, almost, you know, you had to look for it to find it. This would be an excellent opportunity, and I know, Mayor, you're big on parks, this would be an excellent opportunity. It looks like the county's kind of fallen down on the Memorial Park. It's kind of turned into a homeless get-together. Hopefully, eventually, the county will get on that, but for right now, this would be a statement made by the City of Daytona Beach, that the City of Daytona Beach supports the veterans. And that does mean a lot to all of us who served our country. So I really would like to see the city get together a task force. Again, I constantly offer to volunteer on these things, or we can put together a design and at least get some parking and get the flagpoles up there with a sign pointing where the museum is, so. And then, make it look nice. And I know many of us veterans would be glad to volunteer to help keep it nice as well, so. Certainly speaking for myself, and I'm sure the rest of my brothers in arms would be happy to do the same. So, again, I want to thank the Commissioners who did the hard work. This does mean a lot to it. Mr. Mayor, you are correct. This means a lot to all of us who served our country selfishly, and would be glad to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cantu?
Yeah. Before we vote on this, I just would like to tell Drew thank you for all his hard work he did putting this together.
Thank you, Drew. Good job. Do we have any other comments?
Hey, Mr. Jagger, for all you know.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question. When is the grand opening? December 7th, you mentioned, sir?
We're shooting for that date.
Okay. Good. So I'm hoping that when we, when they do, well, I'll do the Commissioner comments at the end.
There's some other board meetings and stuff we have to have with the moving and the money and grants and stuff that I think Drew is helping put together.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote, and then I'll make my comment, unless anybody else has another comment.
I do.
Yes.
Welcome home.
Yeah. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Congratulations. Would all our veterans please stand and like to take a picture? Now, we are also going to ask to take a photo, Commissioner Cantu and myself, with the President, so I'll come down. I want to say I was there...
All the commanders.
Or whoever she says to come down. I want to say that I was there for the grand opening on Beach Street. And I think we should all remember how proud we were and are of this facility. You know, when you visit TripAdvisor for Daytona Beach and things to do, this was at the top of our ranking, along with, right behind the gravesite for Dr. Bethune. And so we have to remember that while we honor our veterans, this is a tourism destination, and this is giving people something to do when they come to Daytona Beach. And what better thing to do than to learn about our national history? And it is, and as an old history teacher, I would dare say it is an excellent, excellent resource for our young people and for all. So I want to, again, thank each of you. I forget your name, but I know, is that the curator?
I was, yes, sir.
Mr. Hawes? Yes, I can, I remember him. He took me on my tour, and I went on many occasions, and will go many more times. You know, things happen, and we didn't want you to have to leave Daytona Beach. You know, no one wanted that. But I believe that the destiny, you know, if we had chosen another place, it might not have been this place, and it may not have been as good as this place. So let's do all that we can to help the center to continue to evolve and to have more people visit the center. Senator Rice's offer of signage, things that we can do as a city to promote it, let's all get behind that. I have, in the past, offered the resources from our mayor's golf tournament in support of this facility, and we have had many of our city's philanthropists get behind this project. But I would say that if you're looking for something to get behind, there's no reason for anyone not to get behind this. And so we're 100% behind you. I think that this is a remarkable contribution on the part of the city. It makes a statement. Great job, staff, great job. My colleagues for working to push it. But the statement is, as Commissioner Reed said, welcome home. We're behind you, we support you, and we embrace you. And most importantly, we appreciate you. Let's take a picture. Thank you, sir. Thank you. 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 God bless it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Congrats. Congratulations. Well done.
I want to thank you. You spoke. You meant to be our chairman. I appreciate you speaking to us today. Folks, if we can go ahead and get the picture taken?
Be my boss, too.
She's like, yes, said it.
One, two, three. Thank you. Five hours per piece. That's a good progress. Okay. There we go. All right. Thank you. We will move on with our agenda.
Okay, we're going to move back to Item 9A, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code Text Amendment, BOA Quorum. to amend the quorum and necessary voting requirements for the Board of Adjustments, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Reed.
I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Oh, never mind. I'm just going to oppose this because I think the Board of Adjustment is very important. And I think more than four people should be making the decision. That's all my comment.
You got your, you got your?
Is your mic on?
Oh, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I, for one, will be voting no because I think this is a very, very important board. And I think we need more than four minimum people to act on it. So I think that we do need more than four. It's my opinion.
Okay, well, that's, that's a fair opinion. And it is, I think you're right. We should have more than four. We may not need it, but it should be the case. Okay. But we got to be able to do business. And this is a form of service that we need to get people to step up to and take, take it a little more seriously. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I agree with Commissioner Traeger.
Okay.
This is a six-member board?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven-member board?
Yeah, but they having a hard time meeting the quorum.
I know, I need a representative from my zone.
You know?
And this is one that provides to have a supermajority, right?
For the, for the approvals? I don't believe so. No, no supermajority required for a vote.
I served on that board prior to the commission. There's no supermajority.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commission, Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. Previously, the Board of Adjustment has operated with a supermajority. The problem has been with this board and with other boards that you wind up not having a quorum, and you have a board that can't function at all. So while the board is important, it's important to be functional. And absent a quorum, then you have property owners who need relief to do particular things that can't get an answer one way or another. Now, the standard for deciding whether or not to grant a variance is a very high legal standard in terms of you're supposed to show there's the only reasonable alternative to use your property and to obtain the variance. And so it's not even a simple, it's an overwhelming weight of evidence in your favor is supposed to be the showing. And I will admit to you, the Board of Adjustment has been a practical entity over the years in that if you didn't have neighbor objections, they probably were a little more in tune with allowing adjustments of property rights. If you had neighbor objections, they become a more stringent or stringent board and have more careful evaluation because they're trying to balance those rights. The recommendation and presentation is here before you because we recognize the importance of having a functioning board. And a board with a supermajority that doesn't have a quorum is non-functioning completely, and you don't have a board. And that's the problem with the current setup.
And this has been the problem, based on my reading of the staff reports, that this is the only board that we have within the organization that has to have a supermajority. And when property owners come to do business in our community, they have been coming to board meetings where they are not able to move forward because we don't have the quorum because of the amount of people that have to vote. So this will only be taking this particular board back to making it similar to all of the other boards that we have within the organization.
Excuse me, it would have the same functional rules as all the other boards. You still have to have a majority vote of the quorum, but not a supermajority. And but you have, without a board that functions, you've gone the other way in terms of your ability to let property owners move forward and do what they need to do. And just, I, I've done a lot of Board of Adjustment hearings over the years. And when there are neighbors in opposition, the inquiry becomes more stringent, and the board pays attention. So it's, it's a flexible tool. But then the Land Development Code by itself really is kind of like a cubbyhole system that isn't very flexible. So you have a means for adjusting things, which is why we've presented this, as we have.
How many members are missing from the board now?
How many members are missing?
Yes.
Dennis, do you know?
How many are active?
Dennis Merzak, Planning Director. I think we just lost another one, so I think we're down to five. Don't quote me on that, but I think it's at five right now.
And I know Mr. Gentle was.
Right.
Yeah, that's my representative.
Yeah.
So our goal is, we, if we have individuals that will serve and come to the meetings, we would not have this problem. But we find ourselves that you call a meeting, a property owner is trying to get a variance, and they can't even move forward because we don't have the amount of individuals to serve. We have them wanting to serve, but they're not stepping up to the plate and actually serving when it's time to be called upon. Because this is not a consistent board. It's a called-upon board.
And just by example, as you move through other items in tonight's agenda, when you're dealing with potential affordable housing questions, and you've got very narrow lots and lots that don't meet the modern standards of the code, the needs to make adjustments as we go through to accommodate affordable housing will be one of the pressing issues that you see. Not the only one, but there are reasons to consider the modification. And I said, I think the other side of the coin is, if the commission sees somehow the process has been abused or led to bad outcomes, you have the opportunity to reverse yourself. So presently, it's really something that isn't functioning practically at all. You can't tell. It's whether people show up or not, and you have a quorum. And it's the quorum now with a supermajority. If you only have five people, it has to be a unanimous vote of the five that show. This is a simple majority of the quorum.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We have to be able to do the business, and we can inhibit our residents. So to me, we have to do it. But we also have to find a way to educate the community about the importance of this board. As Commissioner Reed said, it was a board that my mother actually served on also prior to being kicked off because she had children on the commission. But essentially, she enjoyed that service. And it's, it's, it's really an interesting board. So for those of you who are listening, you know, and the other thing we could do, you know, I don't like to change the dynamics of things, but if, if you think you need more people, is it possible for staff to consider how you could change the dynamics of how the appointments are made?
I think, Mayor, if the commission decided to do that, you could do that. But the problem has been recruiting people to take the positions. I know Ms. Goodman works diligently to find folks to serve, and she often has difficulty finding the people that she needs. And her effort, it's a strong effort to try and accomplish that. That's, adding numbers wouldn't solve the problem, is my point.
Well, I don't, I don't know about that because sometimes you have certain, certain areas and neighborhoods that you can't find as many people. And I, and so I do know that, you know, I don't always have as hard a time finding people. But it may be in terms of where they live.
Yeah.
I couldn't argue about that, and I wouldn't propose to do that, so.
Yeah. And what we will do, we will also look at, based on what our code says and what our charter says, how do we put alternates on the side that if a person can't show up, they can be individuals that serve? So there are a couple of components that we need to look at and bring back to you all for those boards that if people can't serve, and we are able to bring an alternate on for that particular case, we need to look at that as well of having alternates. Because I know, as Mr. Morris says, Ms. Goodman is definitely looking for stuff. We're looking for two or three boards right now for individuals. And so those are things that internally staff will talk about. How do we make sure we have alternates set aside if necessary?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So what I heard was, we might change that for those who are concerned about these numbers. We may change this tonight, but if we were to fill this board with responsible people, we could go back to our seven.
If necessary, correct.
If necessary. But we need the board to function right now.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries 5-1.
Okay. We'll now move on to item 9B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Anti-Discrimination Income Source. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance creating sections 5426 through 5429 of chapter 54 of the Code of Orchesters to prohibit source of income discrimination in the rental of residential dwelling units within the city, and to provide enforcement and penalties and providing an effective date.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Do we have any speakers?
I have a number of speakers. Mr. Mayor, our first speaker is Sheila McKay Vaughn. And on deck is Nancy Wabi.
Sheila McKay Vaughn, 510 South Peninsula Drive. I think this is a very worthy thing. This is very important that people don't have problems because of the income source. But it appears to me that you may be making, by solving, trying to solve one problem, you may be making it difficult for the owners. I believe that the owners need to have a lot to say about what they can or cannot do with the people that are there. It's not wrong, but I don't want you to see, to make a law to help one group to put the other group at odds also. I think that it needs more discussion. I also wonder if there doesn't need to be some kind of arbitration board. Because I, I wonder if you guys, the way I read it, anyway, was that if there was a problem, a lot of this is going to come back to you. And I don't know if you want to be dealing with all of these. This could be open a can of worms. Because I've been, I was an owner of property for 20 years and had lots of them. And I mean, I just been worried. So I'm wondering if you don't maybe want to consider an arbitration board to handle some of this before they, so that you don't have this coming on you. So what I'm asking is that you have a little more discussion. I think it's a great item. I don't think it should be put aside. But I think that it needs a little more schmoozing and a little more mixing up so that we can be equal to every, we don't want to put the rent, the owners of the property in such a bind that they can't, that they can't operate, you know? So just remember, there's two sides to every issue, and please give it some thought. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Wabi, and on deck is Russell Bryant.
Nancy Wabi, 2618 South Peninsula Drive, Daytona Beach. I am a landlord, and I think there needs to be, like Sheila said, more discussion on this and discussion with HUD and Section 8. And some of the rules and regulations that they have need to be looked at. And the main problem with a lot of landlords that I know, we're not taking a lot of Section 8 because we don't have any ramification. If you take, say, a $700 security deposit, and then they just keep breaking things, and they never pay the damage charges till you don't have $700 before they've left, then you are up a crick. And the only thing the Section 8 tells them is they should be paying it, but they're not. So then all they can do is withhold the rent to the landlord. How did that help the landlord? So a lot of landlords are not wanting to rent to Section 8 because of the damages and things aren't being paid for. So I think if we could get some of it changed, then we would all be on board, the landlords, and just have a little, something in there to help the landlord. And so that's where I'm coming from for the landlords in town. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Russell Bryant, and on deck is Trinity, I think it's Kaczynski.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to give public.
Your name, sir, and address?
Apologize, first time for me. Russell Bryant, 444 Seabreeze, Daytona Beach. Thank you for the opportunity to give public comment in the Anti-Discrimination Income Source Ordinance. As a manager of seven apartment complexes representing 1,331 units, five of which are within the city of Daytona Beach, we strive to provide housing that meets the needs of city residents. The housing industry applauds the city's efforts to make housing more accessible to those looking to call the city of Daytona Beach their home. However, as we have seen in other markets, ordinances like these tend to deliver outcomes that run counter to the intended purpose. As housing providers, we are not in the business of denying people housing. At the federal level, we have members of the national, as members of the National Association of Apartments, we support housing choice voucher programs. We understand the importance of ensuring housing attainability. We provide local housing for a market made up of hard-working, blue-collar and professional families, individuals, couples, college students, and retirees. The market sets our pricing, and as a standard, it's a standard that we must maintain for their satisfaction. An ordinance such as this has the potential to negatively impact both residents and housing providers. For housing providers, managing a mixed-income property of Section 8 and non-Section 8 property, non-Section 8 residents would increase our operating costs and administrative requirements with the public authority and additional property inspections above what we already do with the city, county, insurance carriers, and lenders. Additionally, this could affect our cost for borrowing, valuations, and occupancy. For residents, those qualifying for voucher programs would likely not meet our qualifying standards. We are not in the business of denying people for housing. However, our qualifying criteria is how we access, how we assess and mitigate risk. For example, per federal, per housing requirements, we would have voucher applicants pay a processing fee, which is currently at $75, for a credit check, background, financial condition report, like all the rest of our applicants. We do not have the ability to make an exception for one applicant and not another as this would be considered discriminatory process. The ordinance potentially places housing providers within the city at an unfair disadvantage compared to those properties outside of the city. This may strain the availability of housing within the city. As I mentioned, housing accessibility is a goal that is shared by the city and the industry. I'm here to ask that the ordinance be tabled into further discussion with the industry can be had. I believe there are better options for improving availability of rental housing for voucher holders. And we would wholeheartedly welcome the opportunity to discuss alternative courses of action that can be used in the city.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Trinity, is it Kaczynski? And on deck is John Nicholson.
You were spot on with pronouncing that. My name is Trinity Kaczynski, and my address is 340 North Maitland Avenue, Florida 32751 is the zip code. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to give public comment on the Anti-Discrimination Income Source Ordinance. I'm here today on behalf of the Apartment Association of Greater Orlando. Our organization represents both housing providers and suppliers in Volusia County with a large contingent in the city of Daytona Beach and over 209,000 units throughout the central Florida region. First and foremost, we applaud the commission's efforts to make housing more accessible to all its residents. Housing providers share this goal and have taken great strides at the local, state, and federal level to expand access and opportunity to attainable housing. And on a very positive note, we just wanted to quickly commend the city and the housing authority for your exceptional voucher utilization rates. We're not in the business of denying people housing and want them to qualify. However, we do not believe this ordinance is the most viable path forward. As we've seen in other markets, ordinances like these sound good in theory, but rarely deliver the intended outcome of expanding access to affordable housing. One particularly troubling trend we're seeing throughout central Florida is a loss of rental housing inventory owned by independent rental housing providers. With, those are, you know, the housing providers that have maybe one or two units. These mom-and-pop owners are increasingly apprehensive about renting their investment due to pandemic-related regulatory uncertainty and an increasing enticing-for-sale market. Typically, these rental homes are by nature more attainable and have long been an essential component of current affordable housing stock. This ordinance has the potential unintended consequence of not only exacerbating this crisis, but loss of critically needed inventory. Our members primarily own and manage apartment communities that have infrastructure and means to be able to adapt to ordinances like this. But naturally occurring affordable housing stock may not have that same ability. Although well-intentioned, adding an additional layer of operational precariousness may only serve to further complicate, and as I mentioned previously, could exacerbate this issue. In sum, we understand the complexity and appreciate the urgency of increasing the supply and availability of attainable housing in Daytona Beach. Our member stakeholders are committed to working with each of you and city staff to help identify collaborative and impactful solutions to address the crisis, but feel strongly this ordinance is not the effective solution. In light of this, we kindly ask that the commission table this ordinance until further discussion with the industry can be had. Thank you.
And our final speaker on this item is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Years ago, when Brayden Gillespie was in town, one of their guys would constantly say, beware of unintended consequences. When I first moved to Daytona Beach, I had 17 units to rent. When I first moved to Daytona Beach, I had 17 units to rent, and I was going to rent them to college kids, and it was a lucrative market, especially with Emmy Riddle. Well, the problem was that they leave in April or May, and they don't come back until September, so you're with four or five months of no income. So I never thought of the kids leaving. In Miami, they stay around 24, 12 months out of the year. So I looked into affordable housing, I looked into Section 8, and then they gave me this long list. They came out and said, oh, well, then you have to change this, and then you have to do this, and then you have to do that, and you need screen doors, and you have to replace this window, it has to be operational. And I'm like, it can't be operational because we have drug dealers next door, and they break into this guy's apartment from that side, so that's why we've made it permanent. Which he'll, I'm sorry, you'll just have to redo it. Well, one, if you close it up, you can't board it up. You have to make it match the building, all kinds of things. So the cost is prohibitive to match what they want, but the cost goes to the landlord. And you can't up the rent because there's only a certain amount of money that you can charge in Section 8 housing, okay? So Section 8 for me did not make sense because I would have to literally go through all of my apartments and change them all to match their codes. Secondly, the way this ordinance reads is the lawsuit, if for whatever reason, if you deny somebody something, the lawsuit is on us. The landlords have to fight it in court. And I'm sorry, in Daytona Beach and the US, they sue over anything. In a car accident, they sue. So I'm anticipating lawsuits saying, well, you're not renting because I'm black. All right? That's the obvious thing, trust me. And it's not. All right? If I don't want to put a screen door in, that's my option, and I shouldn't have to be sued because I don't want to blast a screen door on my apartment. So it can be any reason, and I don't think the landlords should be subject to lawsuits. If you all are willing to pick up all the legal costs and all the maintenance costs and the repairs and whatnot, then it's fair. If you're not willing to take that and you want to put it on the landlords, then it's not fair. Thank you.
Is that a last?
That was my final speaker for this item.
When in doubt, invoke the race card. When you doubt the veracity of something being the right thing to do, just get up and say, because I'm black. And then we'll polarize folks, and then they'll be divided over an issue. That's already illegal. Okay? To discriminate against a person based upon their race in housing is a federal crime. It's already a crime. So this has nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with a simple reality, and that's just the source of someone's income, where their money comes from, as to whether you can deny them the right to live there. And a lot of the arguments that were made were exactly illustrative of the aim or the objective of being able to discriminate against people. There was a lot said here tonight as it relates to this language of unintended consequences, but there was really nothing verifiably stated that showed what those consequences would be, other than the fact that it burdens a landlord who simply doesn't want to rent to someone based on the fact that they don't like the source of where their money comes from. That's all you said. You didn't give us any evidence as to why, how this would effectively hurt you, other than the fact that there are certain people that you just, some people just don't want to rent to. And so most of all, all of what I heard was strengthen my resolve to say that this is the right thing to do. Yes, we have some people who came and made an argument for their property rights, which no one intends to deny you of your property rights. But in a society where we say that discrimination is not going to be tolerated, your property rights should not supersede our driving agenda to eliminate discrimination. And if they do, then I'd simply say, you know, you know, while I'm mayor, buy property somewhere else to rent to folks, because I'm not going to support discrimination. And I haven't heard anything that remotely really made me think that my mind should be changed. Now, my colleagues may feel differently, but I'm not changing my mind based on what I heard. And is there anyone else that has any comments, and then we will move with the vote.
I have a thought on that, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Now, is there any way for maybe one prop, people who own one property to be excused from that? I know Section 8, and the requirements to turn something into a Section 8 rental property, it's very strenuous. Because I know people who own homes who do, and their homes are Section 8. And the requirements to do, to be put on the list to accept Section 8, it's strenuous, and it's extremely expensive. Larger apartment complexes, yes, but maybe people who have one property that they're trying to rent or something of that sort, maybe something different because it is very costly, and they are very, now, I will say, I don't really have concerns as far as whether or not people are going to come in and tear up their properties. Simply very, very seldom, if ever. They have four month, four yearly inspections or something of that sort, even scratches on the wall of paint, they could lose, they're at jeopardy of losing their Section 8. So they're very on top of making sure those tenants take care of those properties. That's not an issue. But what can be an issue is being a private person trying to comply with Section 8 rules and trying to keep that compliant all year round.
Okay, I'm going to ask Bob to address that, but what I would say to that is that we should want to have standards, although that's, and I think that their standards, because you all will remember, we had one person that owned 50 properties in Daytona Beach. And about a year, about two years ago, we had residents coming up regularly, routinely, talking about his property and what his property was like. Now, I know that's not the one person you're describing, but Bob, would you address that issue that she's addressing?
Yeah, let me do that. So as I understand, the Section 8 rental voucher program, and this may apply to other types of public assistance as well, is the tenant goes to the Housing Authority, and they essentially sign up with the authority. The authority does some sort of inspection of the property and has to meet their standards, the unit has to meet their standards. And if you've got a larger family, obviously you need more numbers of rooms and et cetera. So I think the intent of the Commission, and you all correct me, I'm sure if I'm wrong, but I think the intent here was not to require a landlord to build an addition on to their unit in order to house every potential family. I think the intent here was not to, was to not to create a violation for that, but instead to make it a discriminatory violation, subject to code enforcement, where the landlord simply refuses to do the administrative paperwork necessary to comply with the Section 8 housing standards. So the way Section 8 works is the tenant then through, through the Housing Authority presents a contract or a lease with the landlord. So landlords may complain, I think we heard some of that tonight, that there's more administrative cost to them in going through that process and to make their property available for the inspection. But I don't think our intent here tonight is to say that landlords must renovate their property in order to avoid a code violation.
It is not to renovate the property. It is just to be able to say, this can be listed as a Section 8 apartment or home. These are all the things and additional things that must be done. And from what I know of the list, it is very strenuous. To me, would be very costly. And my goal is not to, not to add cost on to people who are homeowners and want to rent out their little apartments or whatever they have. I don't want to add undue stress in the, in the idea of it's going to cost this much money. The stuff John was saying was true as far as putting screen doors on and things that people unnecessarily, you wouldn't have to do if you were going to rent an apartment and weren't on Section 8. Windows and the types of windows and things that they want. And I think perhaps maybe even we'll look at this again, maybe we can table and look at it again in the next meeting, and then we can have someone from Section 8 come in and say, these are the things that would have to be done to be able to be on Section 8 to an apartment, so that we would know, so that we're making an informed decision.
So we can certainly take another stab at this and try to clarify that it's only intended to apply to discrimination where the landlord refuses to cooperate in the administrative process, that where there are additional costs involved to the landlord, that would not be a basis for discrimination, if that's your desire.
So if the landlord applies, he doesn't have to go through with it.
Say, if the tenant applies?
He can go apply for, to be a Section 8, and then they say you have to do all of these things. He doesn't have to do those things.
So there are actually two processes here. So as I understand it, a landlord can get on a affordable, or rather, a list with the authority, and then they'll bring tenants to them. Line to prohibit discrimination where the tenant comes to the landlord and says, I'm entitled to Section 8 housing. So that's the type of discrimination that this would be intended to prohibit. So it's actually two different processes. If a landlord voluntarily goes to the Housing Authority and says, I want to get on your list, the Housing Authority may require them to do certain upgrades in order to be on the list. But that's a slightly different situation than where the tenant comes with a Section 8 voucher, and the landlord says, we're not going to rent to you because of your source of income.
Okay.
And that's normally, that's what, that's the real objective of what we're trying to avoid. And that's, that's, you hear that a lot. I mean, I've been driving in my car and listened to it on the radio. I don't rent to Section 8.
Okay, are you saying that?
And it's not just Section 8, by the way.
You go to the landlord with your voucher, and you're saying he can't deny, but if he doesn't want to do all the work that you're talking about, because I'm not sure all about, I mean, you're saying he can't deny, he can't deny?
No, I think we could clarify that.
Okay, so can we table this, and I like?
Well, we can table it, but we need to discuss it so we understand it.
Right.
So there is one, there is one suggestion I can make in order to clarify that, and I actually spoke to Commissioner May earlier about this. We could add a word if, to Section 54-28A1, and it's the, you know, the initial paragraph that deals with refusal to rent or show because of a person's source of income. But it goes on to say, or because of any requirements of a public assistance program. I might suggest that for that last phrase, we could add administrative, so that it would then say that it would be a violation to refuse to rent or show or lease because of any administrative requirement of the assistance program. And we could, you know, in order to differentiate between administrative requirements such as signing the lease and showing the property versus actual physical improvements in order to meet the housing standards, if that is acceptable to the Commission.
So in other words, if they already meet the housing standard, they wouldn't have to do anything different.
Right.
And you're not trying to make them add to anything, but the bottom line is if some, a person who gets, bottom line is if they already meet the standard, they can't just deny me because I'm Section 8. And that's really what I'm trying to get to. I'm not trying to say to someone who doesn't want to have a place that's reasonable, although I really do think that, you know, we want most of our properties to meet this, the standards, but that's not something that I think we should regulate.
Right. And keep in mind that there will be standards for rental. These will have to get a rental license, which requires an inspection. Obviously, we have building code standards, we have code enforcement standards, so there will be other standards that apply for properties that maybe aren't even subject to the Housing Authority requirements or other sources of income, for instance, for veterans vouchers or for Social Security, people on Social Security. You know, we still have all of our standard code provisions in terms of, in terms of housing compliance.
Okay, so do we, do we, do we have any other questions of that, Commissioner?
I think, I think this is a little bit murky. I think we need to finesse it a little bit more.
Okay.
I'm going to agree with that.
You're just going to agree that we need to finesse it a little more. I just want to make sure that he understands so that he can finesse it in a way that is successful. You can't finesse something that you don't make a, you don't arrive at some agreement on. Do you feel that you understand what we are stating?
I believe so. I can certainly, we're just on, well, we are on second reading, so we'd have to come back with this. So we've got time then to redraft. Let's just take a step back and do that, if that's your will.
I just want to be clear for the record because we are trying to tie this only to Section 8, and that is not the case. It's your source of income that we're trying to, everyone continues to say Section 8. If I have a property, I think we need to finesse it and bring it back, if I have a property that I don't want to be on Section 8, I do not have to go on Section 8 with the Housing Authority. And so that's the key, that I think a property owner needs to realize that they don't have to put their house up as a Section 8 property. So if you don't want that to be on there, you don't have to. Our key factor in trying to make sure that this is right is the source of income. You cannot discriminate against someone based on the source of income, not Section 8. If I don't want my rental properties to be Section 8 properties, they don't. We did not make, we're not making it mandated based on the Housing Authority. So I just want us to be clear with, because everyone that's coming up here is talking about Section 8 as if that is a concern or an issue. If you don't want your property to be a Section 8 property, you're not going to put it on there. If you don't want to redo a roof, I mean, add a room, a wall in a room for different bedrooms, you won't have to. So when we bring that back up, I think we need to be very clear that we're looking at the source of income, regardless of what the source of income, and not that this is a Section 8 Housing Authority-type of program, and I think that's the key.
I have a real-life case for you. For example, I'd like to know what, how this would work. If somebody has a rental property, they advertise it, somebody comes up to them with a housing voucher, and they say, I'm sorry, but my property, my property isn't listed with the Housing Authority. Under this ordinance, would they then have to go and do that work to have it listed? That, I'm not, it was a question for clarification because somebody posed that to me, and I wanted to bring it out into the public view, right? And so that is the, that is the issue that people are having right now. They're not understanding possibly that part of it, right? And also, we're not, are we, or are we not saying that this would be mandatory for all homeowners who want to rent out to also take their property through this process? They don't in fact have to do that, correct? They don't have to list with it, or do they with this?
Well, you all have a choice because you can make it so that a person would have to rent to a person who, who has Section, a Section 8 voucher. And for me, I think that's the right thing to do. I mean, I think that if I have a voucher and it meets the standard, this is my source of how I pay you, then you should be required to rent to me. But the issue is that whether you, how do you make, how do you marry those two things? Because then as the property owner, I then have to take some action that I may not want to take. Okay? And that action is to sign up to be a Section 8 renter. But let's remember, and I, that when a person does that or refuses to do that, they are in fact saying that I'm refusing to take funding from Section 8, and they're making a choice to discriminate. Now, is it their right? That's, I guess in some ways it is. That's sort of a loophole we're trying to decide how tightly we want to close it. Do you want to close the loophole, or do you just want to play with it and pretend that you, you're going to stop people from discriminating against?
I have a question, Mr. Jagger. How do we, okay, say I'm a homeowner, and someone comes up to me with a Section 8 voucher, which I'm not real familiar with all that. Okay. And let's say my rent is, I'm charging 900, they're going to give me a voucher for 900 every month. Okay, but if I'm not part of the Section 8, and I don't want to do 900 every month. Okay, but if I'm not part of the Section 8, and I don't want to do all these improvements that she is saying, does the homeowner have to do that?
I think the intent here is not to require the landlord to improve the property, but instead, where the unit otherwise complies with all the physical requirements of Section 8, that they cannot discriminate, because they just don't wish to rent to someone who has that source of income.
Gotcha.
I don't think anyone intends, and again, you guys will correct me, that, you know, they would require the, the landlord to put on a new roof because the housing authority acquires a new roof. That would seem to be unreasonable from a code enforcement standpoint. So...
That's exactly my sentiment.
Right, okay. So, you're going to clear that up?
We, we can add a line to clarify that, if you wish.
That's exactly my sentiment. And, and because I, I think if my, if your property is nice enough to meet the Section 8 standard, and they show up and they've got a voucher, why, why would you just be able to reject them? That, you know, now, if you, and, and so that's, that's, that's the loophole, right?
Yeah.
And I, you know, otherwise, if your property doesn't meet that standard, I don't think we should make them have to go and meet the standard. So, we'll let you go back and massage it. I recommend that you all, you know, talk with him, so you can get, get these nuances sort of ironed out, so you'll be able to make an informed decision. Obviously, we know where I stand. Okay?
All right, so where we stand right now, then, are, are we going to have a motion to table, then?
A motion to table until you're ready.
All right, so we won't need to take public comment tonight, because this will come back, and we'll have public comment at that time.
We already took public comment.
I'm sorry, you're right, but I'm just thinking ahead, I suppose, okay? All right.
Okay.
This will be put on the next agenda.
Whenever he gets it ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll entertain a motion to table. Who?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 9C. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Third Amendment to Minto-Tomoka Parcel B Plan District Agreement, Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the Third Amendment to the Minto-Tomoka Parcel B Plan District Agreement, amending the Plan District Agreement with respect to commercial area of the plan district located at the north side of LPGA Boulevard and the east side of Timber Creek Road by adding additional commercial uses and signage and modifying required building colors, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Third Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, second from Commissioner Traeger.
And I do have Mr. Rob Marrowhill on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
All right, no questions. Where is Rob? Okay, all right, all right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 9D, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Accessory Dwelling Units Land Development Code text amendment, ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, LDC, in relation to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, amending Article 4, Section 4.9.2.4, Article 5, Section 5.3, Article 6, Table 6.2.2.1, and Article 11, Section 11.5, to add ADUs as permitted accessory use for single-family lots in multiple zoning districts, establish use-related standards and defined terms, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioners Cantu. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Henry.
Oh, is Commissioner Henry said so moved? So, you had a second. Motion, have a second. Okay, sorry. All right. We have speakers.
We do. I didn't know if this was the item.
Oh, okay, this is the item that Commissioner May wanted to pull until they, well, I'll let you speak, but I, we all have received the correspondence, and I can understand the fit sentiment. Go ahead.
I just wanted to be known that, and we all know that we don't have a commissioner for Zone 2, and I think that the residents in Zone 2 deserve representation as it relates to this topic and all topics. And since we don't have a representative right now, it would be a good decision, I believe, to go ahead and wait until that person is actually elected, and then continue on.
I agree.
I don't have a problem with that. This, ma'am, my problem is why November 17th, that's a little late.
I'm not the person who chose the date. I would just like it to be when that position is filled. I did not choose the date.
Okay.
I believe that's the first meeting of the new commissioner.
Yeah.
Is that, meeting on a new commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, I think we all received the correspondence from those who used the logic that I used as it related to 2:00 AM bar closing, to say that, that we should wait. And I corresponded with some of them and said that I personally would support it based on that logic. And that's, that's a reasonable sentiment, and it is a hot-button topic in that zone. So, while I, you know, don't know that it will change the outcome, who the person is, I think it's reasonable that we would wait. We can't stop all of our business, but some business we, we can. But, it doesn't, you know, it, it made that the person could be seated if they have an outright winner in the primary, you know, if there's an outright winner. I say just bring it back, because whoever that person is, I said that 2:00 AM bar closing and ADUs are things that they should be talking to the residents about to get their sentiment. They should have an opinion. So, I, you know, hate to say it, but I know when I first came on the commission, we had to decide what to do with the, with the peer. And that was, that had the chambers overloaded with people. So, sometimes you have to come in to, come right into the fire. We won't be giving the candidate a chance beyond that, because it's been an issue, I think, so.
Continue.
So, do we?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second to continue?
Second.
We have a motion. Commissioner Reed, second from Commissioner Henry. Okay.
And are we continuing this to a date certain?
Uh...
Generally, a motion to continue would be to a date certain, and, but we understand the instruction for the manager to bring back earlier if there's a winner in the primary.
Yes, okay. All right, so the date certain as of now is November 17? Yeah.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to item 9E. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Affordable Housing Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending City Land Development Code, LDC, Section 6.22, to establish affordable housing incentives and provide for affordable housing inventories in conformity with the State Housing Initiative Partnership Act, Florida Statute 420.907 through 420.9079, amending LDC Section 8.4, non-conforming lots of record, and LDC 10.5, definitions to conform with these affordable housing amendments, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Motion from Commissioner Reed, second from Commissioner May.
And I have no speakers for this item.
Okay. Bob, is this, is this our item?
Yeah, this is the item I talked to you about before the meeting, Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I...
So, I'd asked the mayor to, to give me an opportunity to seek your direction on a potential change to what's been proposed here, and, and not, not a legal question, just really trying to find out what your desire is. This affordable housing ordinance provides three incentives to encourage affordable housing. The first has to do with non-conforming lots for single-family and duplex homes. The, the next two are for multifamily properties or projects. So, there's a density bonus for multifamily, and there's also a development fee waiver that's applicable. For the development fee waiver incentive, there is a provision that essentially is intended to discourage the clumping of affordable housing projects. And so, that provision provides that the waiver of the fees will not apply if you've got a proposed multifamily development within a mile and a half of another development that has received the waiver within three years. So, again, you know, we're trying to prevent here, the intent here in drafting this was to prevent the clumping. What that ends up doing, then, is, is adding a cost factor to pay for those fees for a potential affordable housing development. My question for you is, do you want to have that same sort of disincentive or incentive to avoid clumping of, of projects with regard to the density bonus? So, my feeling would be is if your intent is to prevent the clumping, you have the same disincentive in the, in the, the density bonus section as you would for the fee waiver section. Everyone follow me? So, that would be my question to you. Do you want to move an identical anti-clumping clause into the density bonus section? The way the density bonus works, just so everybody has the background, if you have a multifamily project coming forward, you get a density bonus not to exceed 150% of the density otherwise permitted for that project. So, and then there's a maximum on that of up to 40 units per acre. And of those density bonus units, half of those have to be for affordable housing. So, that's the density bonus.
Go ahead.
Are we speaking about only large projects, or are we also speaking about some people who want to do individual projects close to each other in proximity, maybe two houses on one block, et cetera?
This would only apply to multifamily apartment-type complexes.
We, we understand, we, we basically have said we don't want to clump all of them into one area. And so, you know, my sentiment was, we would like to invoke this policy, so, so as not to, to incentivize clumping.
So, if there are two projects in one area, one gets the waiver, they're both good projects, the second one would not, they would not be able to build, number one, and they would not get the waiver, or they'd have to wait for three years to build. Is that correct?
They would be able to build, but they wouldn't be entitled to the bonus if they're within a mile and a half, the density bonus, if they're within, within a mile and a half of another project that received the density bonus.
Is a mile and a half a, an arbitrary number?
I don't want to say anything's arbitrary in what we adopt. I can tell you, that's a number that we brought forward from previous regulations.
Okay. Because that seems like a, a fair distance apart. Dennis, you want to talk about that? Because, because that's kind of the issue, that, that doesn't seem that clumped.
Thank you, Dennis Morozak, Planning Director. One of the things I did want to mention, though, in the question of if, if you can't do it within the, the mile and a half, there is also the provision that the city commission can grant the authority. These, these density bonuses, these are all done administratively, but you do have the opportunity to take a project to the city commission, which can modify those standards and grant the, the approval, so.
Yeah, this is just a question, whether you want this to operate administratively so that you would not have the clumping at administrative level, or alternatively, if you did nothing, that project would have to come back to you.
Right. So, if it was a good project that you wanted to see come forward, we could still bring it forward to the city commission, and then you can act on that project based on the merits of that project.
I like that. Y'all like that? That way, we can kind of decide if it's really clumped.
So, okay, so clarify for me, then, we're going to put the clumping in and then have projects come back to accept, be accepted out of the clumping provision?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Not, the non-clumping provision. I apologize for the legalese, but I think that's an easy way to understand what we're trying to accomplish. So, I will go ahead and make that change for second reading at your direction.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Okay, thank you, staff. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. And again, thank you, staff, for bringing that forward. That's a very important step forward.
Okay. Moving on to 9F. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Outdoor Art Display and Sales Activities, Main Street and Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending Section 5.3 of the City Land Development Code relating to accessory uses and structures to authorize outdoor art displays and sales as an accessory use for certain commercial properties located in the RDB 2, RDB 3, RDM 2, and the RDM 5 zoning districts, subject to use-specific standards, providing a sunset date, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved. But, I do have a question on this. Mr. Jagger, is sunsets within a year? Have we discussed this? And if it's doing good, is there, can it come back before us, before it sunsets? And I don't have the exact date in front of me, but...
Right. The sunset's on September 30th, 2022.
So, can we have it come back?
Yes.
To us?
We can certainly do that. There's a couple ways you can do it. You can just instruct the manager to do so tonight, or we can actually build it straight into the ordinance.
I like it to be built right into the ordinance, and we don't forget.
Dennis, Dennis has already wrote it that it will come back a month before.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we have sort of our standard, our standard provision here for sunsetting, but I will add a line to that, if everyone's in agreement, that will require the manager to bring this back for review prior to the sunset date.
Okay, thank you.
And now, just, just for clarification, this is, this is not the mural project. This is outdoor art display and sales activities.
Yes.
And it has to be on their property.
Correct.
Correct. So, not the sidewalk, which is our property.
Totally correct.
This is the... Oh, when the, when we did the Main Street tattoo, and we offered them the ability to do some additional displays on their property, we wanted to expand it to all of Main Street and all of M&amp;B as well. So, that's what this is.
Okay.
And I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, for this item.
So, I have an example. For example, like Ms. Hurd, she owns all of that, like, little parking lot of her business, so she could do that in all of her thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a public hearing.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Krista Goodrich is our only speaker on this item.
So, I'm Krista Goodrich with, at 2800 South Peninsula. I actually thought it was including, like, sidewalk stuff, so that's why I was going to talk about it. I do support it, and I think we should expand it to include some sidewalk stuff in front of all buildings on Main Street, even those of us that don't own parking lots. There could be little displays in front of our buildings, just out to a certain point, to make all of Main Street very art-friendly. That's all.
And I agree with that.
You do or don't. You said you do or don't.
I do. I, I concur with what she said. But, at any rate, this is what we have, so...
There, there is a separate sidewalk licensing permitting process. And I don't know all the details, Dennis, you probably know more about that than I do, but there is a possibility to operate within the sidewalk with restrictions.
Yeah, thank you. I was just, as a matter of fact, talking to Jim about that. I think we do have the opportunity, if somebody wanted to come forward with a sidewalk license permit to be able to do a, a use within the right-of-way, we'd be able to do that. It'd be separate from this, but it'd be an opportunity to do that. We, we review those on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, good. That's, that's the kind of stuff I'd like. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
Question, how long would it take for, they would have to submit, so people understand, they'd have to submit a plan of some sort, correct?
They have to submit a, a sketch.
But, there's no, there's no fees involved for that?
That's, that's correct. No fees. And the sketch is, just so we get an understanding of where they're setting things up.
And I recognize...
So that we go out there and we can take a look at it.
Sure. I recognize it's Saturday and Sunday, and there's no requirement for restrooms or, or AD, you know, and any kind of ADAs, anything like this.
There is not that requirement with that, no.
And no food?
No food.
Okay, and then also, what about, how long ahead do they have to act, do they have to, how long ahead should they put in the information? 45 days is standard?
No, you know, we're only asking for a sketch plan, so we're not asking for a whole lot of information. They bring it to the office, and we can take a look at it. If it looks good, then we can sign off on it, and off they go. I, you know, I don't want to, if it comes to me on a Friday and they want me to take a look at it, I'm going to take a look at it on a Friday. I'll promise them that.
But, it's not going to be the normal 45-day permit?
No, no, no. This is something we can turn quick.
And how long can they do this, Dennis?
I'm sorry?
How long can they do this?
Well, I think they can, as long as they turn in a sketch plan, they can, they can use that sketch plan for as long as they want. If they want to make a change to it, they can come back to the city. So, this can last until the sunset comes up, and, and we go there.
All right, Saturday, Sunday only. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we, uh... We have any other comments, questions? We have a motion, a second? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
And for the record, Item 9E and this Item 9F, the second public hearing is September Going to move on to Item 9G, which is the Development and Administrative Services, Planning Division, Ocean Center Public Use Permit. This is a resolution quasi-judicial hearing, a resolution relating to the Ocean Center, located at 101 North Atlantic Avenue, approving an amended and restated public use permit to incorporate and consolidate previous terms and conditions, and establish additional terms and conditions relating to the conduct of outside activities at the Ocean Center, amending an interlocal agreement between the City and the County of Volusia, approved by City Resolution Number 17-197, for consistency with the amended and restated public use permit, and providing when this resolution shall take effect.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have speakers?
I have some speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Clay Urban.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. This goes back many years, in the 90s, when the county wanted to put stuff on their parking lot years ago, the merchants on Main Street opposed it because it would, to them, lower their property values in terms of renting out, okay? They were renting out like 10x10 tent for like $10,000. And they thought that if they opened up the huge parking lot at the Ocean Center, that they would lose value. So that's why we ended up with all the development on Beach Street. If some of you remember, there was a whole new slew of places on Beach Street, and the park was used, and it just expanded, the Ocean, the Bike Week. We were at, I think, 225,000 at the time, and when it went to Beach Street, we were at 5, 525, or something of that nature. It almost doubled. I don't oppose this. I do find it a little bit restrictive, because some of that objections, and some of the things that we've put into it that has hurt Bike Week, may do the same thing here. It's a little bit too restrictive on the area on the south side. If you go to the west parking lot, it's surrounded on three sides by homes. That's the one I'm worried about. The other properties I'm not worried about, because it's all basically the Ocean Center and Main Street. So Main Street's not going to care for any noise. The residents will. I do have a problem with the county owning property, the lagoon is theirs, all right? And when they have events, they turn their speakers, and it goes right in my bedroom window. And you talk to them, and they say, okay, no problem, we'll fix it, and they don't. All right? So I have a problem with the noise where I live. The Main Street, we used to have the same problem. They've turned their speakers, we don't hear Main Street anymore. So I don't believe there'll be a problem, especially since they expanded the Ocean Center as far as it has, to anything between the Ocean Center and Main Street. I'm most concerned with the parking lot that has all the people around it, it has to be preserved. The other stuff, I'm asking you not to put the restrictions in, to allow them to have everything that can be done on Main Street, done on that parking lot, because it literally is part of Main Street. And the Ocean Center blocks it from the residential neighborhood. So I want them, and I want, see, what's happening with Bike Week, it's dying, it's slowing down. And I believe we have to do everything in our power to help Bike Week, and by tying the hands of the Ocean Center, like we do, hurts. So I'm asking you to consider that restrictions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Clay Urban, and on deck is Teresa Doan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Clay Urban. I'm the Director of Growth and Resource Management for Volusia County. Tonight with me also is Paolo Soria, who's our Senior Assistant County Attorney, Tim Riddle, who's the Director of the Ocean Center, and Trish Smith, who's the planner who actually did all the work. And so we want to talk to you about what we're trying to get accomplished here. As you can see, we've had several public use permits since this was originally developed in 1982. And what that does, it lays the framework so that what we do at the Volusia County Ocean Center, which is part of all of our tourist activities here, is in, is in tune with what you and the City of Daytona Beach want to see done in that area. So what we've been able to do is work through an agreement. Several years ago, our County Council initiated a Beachside Redevelopment Act Committee, and part of the things that they identified was, we needed to do more at the Ocean Center. So we've been working with your staff, and I have to say, it's been a pleasure working with everybody in your planning and development administration, as well as the County, City Attorney's Office. We've been able to come up with a lot of different interpretations and operational improvements in regards to this public use permit. What we're looking for is allowing to do things outside if we have somebody inside, plain and simple. And right now, we are restricted in regards to what we can do out in our parking lots. We understand the concern of Mr. Nicholson, and at the Plan Commission, Tim Riddle offered his phone number to John, so that that way, if John has any problems, he can call John right up, right away. So that's important. That's called communication. So what we're seeing here is that we're looking for that. We understand that we will still stick by the Bike Week and Biketoberfest requirements for permitting and all of that. We do have one other change, though, that your staff was willing to allow us to have alcoholic sales on the parcel that fronts on Main Street, it's called Parking Lot C. We respectfully request it not be allowed. When we met with the Main Street Merchants Association prior to coming into the Plan Commission, one of the requests, they asked us that that not be allowed, and we want to honor what we've offered to them. And so, in the copy that our County Attorney's Office has sent over to Mr. Jager and Ben Gross, they have that information available. So again, we will not be requesting that on that parcel, even though your staff has identified it. And I do have to bring up, you know, a concern that was brought up at your Plan Commission in regards to the appearance of the lot. The lot does have a finished brick paver texture out there on part of it, and other parts, there's some dirt. There was concerns identified by Ms. Ruby and Mr. Nicholson about, why aren't you going to be doing something to make that better? We are going to be trying to do something with it. Unfortunately, we don't have that currently in our budget, and as we all are going through this budgetary timeframe, what we're going to be looking for is what are opportunities to work with the City of Daytona Beach, through the CRA, through grants available for potential low-impact development, where we can go ahead and do improvements in there to, on an incremental basis. We understand there's a restriction that within the next five years, we have to come in for permitting and have it completed by the seven years, to have it brought up to complete standards. But we would like to be able to work through this incrementally, and basically, give you our commitment that we're going to be doing the best we can, given whatever revenues we have coming over the next five years.
Okay.
All righty?
All right. Thank you very much.
And I'll be available if there's any other questions.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Okay.
Our next speaker is Teresa Doan, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
I am very pleased to speak to you this evening in support of this public use permit. The Ocean Center has been an excellent partner to the business community on Main Street. There are many excellent features that are encompassed in this proposal. It streamlines the rules and the regulations for the Ocean Center going forward. We have a shared parking facility that I believe is proving helpful to both the Peabody Auditorium, as well as the Main Street merchants. And if, if I were you, I would approve it on the basis of you getting a sign on A1A for Peabody Auditorium. I think that'll be very helpful to the city. We consider the Peabody Auditorium and the Ocean Center to be huge community assets, and we are very fortunate to have them in close proximity to Main Street, and we feel that this is a win-win for the city and the county.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, Teresa Doan, 1010 Victory Road. Sorry, I forgot.
Thank you. Our final speaker on this item is Ann Ruby.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I am very concerned about the fact that they're going to be trying to improve it, promising to improve it, and having up to seven years to actually do anything? I don't think that's good enough. They've owned this since 2017, and have done virtually nothing. So "I'll try" doesn't really seem to cut it, particularly not when you're really going to be pushing to get Main Street developed with murals and arts projects. That parking lot can't be an "I'll try." It just can't. At the, at the Planning Board meeting, they indicated that they, what they wanted to do was to raise the level of the parking lot, so that it was level with the back lot that's just in the north of it, which makes no sense, and that that cost would be about $250,000. I really think there are alternative plans that could be done that would be much better, and actually function better for the city. So "I'll try," "they'll try" is not an adequate answer here. It just isn't. Not when they, what you're going to approve tonight is going to give them five years to come up with a design, and seven years to complete it. And they don't have to, they don't have to promise you anything. They can say, and he just said it, they'll try. They'll work with you, they'll try. But they've had four years of owning this property. How hard have they tried in the past four years? So I really think this needs to be reexamined in terms of the timeframe, and that what they're actually committing to doing. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Do we have any comments? No comments from the Commission? I will just say that you have to remember that CRAs are actually partnerships between, is a partnership between the city and the county. And so I think he was right in saying that, you know, we have to do something to try and help also. Can't just leave it be. But I'll leave that at that. I don't, do we have any other, no other questions or comments? All those who are in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
The version you adopted, by the way, has the change that was requested by the county, so that can be signed off on.
Okay.
Okay.
Did I say seven? Motion carries six zero. Seven is my normal number. Thank you.
Okay, our next item, we're, sorry.
Mr. Feature, do you think you can call the county and see what we can work out between the city and county?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next item, which is our budget item, Item Number 9H. And under 9H, the first item there is the public hearing, so we'll let the general public speak, and then I'll read the two resolutions. So our first speaker tonight on the budget is John Nicholson, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Yesterday at the County Council, there must have been maybe 75 people opposing the budget. They wanted a 100% rollback, and the county's in, between a rock and a hard place. They're going to have to come up with tens of millions of dollars in the next couple of years, eight million each and every year for their Sun Rail. The three dollar, now, three dollars, three million each year for the next five years, until they reach the minimum wage requirement, which is about $15 million to the county each and every year. So they were between a rock and a hard place, and they were discussing whether they should go to rollback, or partial rollback, or 5% or 3% reduction. There's nothing here on that. And if we're not going to go to rollback, if we're going to stay exactly the same, my question is why? What is it that we have to do? What is our expenses that we have that we can't go to rollback? Now, it's not that I like rollback. I mean, I opposed Bud Asher. We went seven years with rollback, and then we got hit with a 27% tax increase. So I'm not a big fan of rollback. But partial rollbacks, or, especially now with the COVID and whatnot, they made a big case about that, and it's true. People are hurting. If we don't need the money, maybe a partial rollback. But to go to keep it the same millage, if we need it, fine. I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. But there's nothing here telling us why we need to keep it the same, or why we can't do any rollback or partial rollback. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Ann Ruby.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I, when the half-cent sales tax came up, I learned that our roadway budget was only $800,000 a year for roadway maintenance and sidewalk maintenance, and that it needed to be 2.5 million. And I, my understanding is, in the new proposed budget, it's at 4 million, which is phenomenal, because it will allow public works to do a lot of catch-up. And I think that's great. And if that's part of what this is funding, wonderful. The other thing that I am very concerned about are, is compensation for our first I think too many of them need to work overtime, and that's stressful on them, and when they're responding, it makes it stressful for them to respond, and we all are affected by that. When I call 911, it's going to be probably one of the worst days of my life. I want to make sure that the officer who shows up, or the EMT, or the firefighter, is well-rested, and is not having to work three or four jobs, and is not stressed out worrying about money. So it's one thing to honor our first responders, but I think we need to put our money where our mouth is, put our hands in our pockets books, and make sure that we're adequately funding a budget that will take care of them. Thank you.
Okay. That was my final speaker for the public hearing portion. I'll go ahead and read the first resolution. So it's a resolution, public hearing, a resolution tentatively determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation, and making the annual property ad verum levy in the amount of 5.5300 per $1,000 of non-exempt excess value for general fund operations of the City of Daytona Beach for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, through September 30th, 2022, and the voted debt service millage of 0.2394, and providing an effective date.
So move. For the record, when we talked to Mr. Feature, the reason for this tax rate, let's say the same, and increase of 2.7 was due to our police and firefighters. Am I correct?
Not only police and fire, that's all of our employees, and it doesn't even cover that, but in reference to, all of our employees are being paid well, we are probably highest in the county, other than Volusia County, as far as our, for public safety, but for all of our employees as well.
Okay. And I'll second.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Straight.
How much new, new housing or thing has been added to our roles this year?
I don't have the exact numbers of the new, but we have, let me see, for our second reading, we will be adding all of that information of the new permits. Going through the process right now, over 7,700 single-family residential and apartment rental units have recently been completed or currently under construction.
Are they, how many do we have online?
I don't have that number.
I mean, how many?
Do we have on the rolls, the tax rolls that come in in January? I'll have to get that for you.
I just wanted to know how much new money's coming in, you know, on that. And also, the property proper in Daytona Beach has been evaluated more. So even though we keep this at the same, same millage rate, the property tax roll will be more. Am I correct?
Yes.
And I wonder if now is the proper time, being as we just went through a horrific year last year. I'm thinking maybe this might not be a good time to, what is 2.70 increase, or whatever it is, for the property owner in Daytona Beach. I would like to go to the rollback rate. I think that would be I think that would be more fair for the majority of our residents.
I, I do know, I'm just, I, I, it is my responsibility to make sure from a fiscal standpoint, you are aware. If we do go that, we are going to have to cut some items, and we will. But we want to try to do some of the investments, some of the things that you all have, have been asking. And I think Ann Ruby made a statement about when, you know, infrastructure improvements, capital improvements, taking care of our employees will be key. And so, we're not increasing that, but we're not lowering it for, for individuals. Those are just things we'll have to look at, and there will have to be cuts, and there will be decisions that will be brought to you all that will impact employees or some of the capital projects that you have coming forward. But if there's a, if you are asking us to do that, Fred and his team will look at what will have to be cut, and we'll make sure to bring that to your attention. But Fred, if you want to come up here and make any, any comments.
That would be our infrastructure as well?
That, unless you say you don't want that, you want, you want us to close down parks and reg.
I mean, it has to go.
Well, that, I mean, if it's, if it's $2 or $3 million.
And, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the question is. Fred Coulter, Budget and Information Systems, sorry, the title's new. I've got, Latisha's has enough to know who I am. So, any?
So, is there a particular question?
Was there a question that I was here?
We were to go back to the rollback rate. What?
Let, let me, okay. We, we've been up here, and I've been through 10 budgets here, or 12, or something like that. Okay. No, 10 to 11 or something. But anyway, Commissioner Traeger values rollback, okay?
Even partial.
And we all, huh? Yeah, she values rollback. And, and we all value having good, a good tax rate. But the reality is that, you know, yeah, last year, we did have $4 million, for the record, in the budget for roads last year. So, that's not an increase. I'm not, that's, that's a no, a non-negotiable for me. We got to get these roads caught up. You know, they're, they're way behind, and we have to, and this is not really catching them up, this is just maintaining them. But if we can start maintaining them, we'll be way better than we have been. So, let's, let, leave that at, at a non-negotiable. But if there's not really an appetite for going to rollback, we don't really have to talk about that in terms of a cut. So, if you, if you have an appetite, then you need to share your appetite. If you don't have an appetite, then, you know, we have to keep moving. So, we, we, we know where she stands, and we, we, we respect that. So, is there an appetite?
I don't want to cut any infrastructure or any of our police and firefighters.
Okay. Okay. I, I don't think there's much of an appetite.
I do want to say on that, Ms. Mayor, that because we were not able to have a retreat, my direction to Fred and, and the finance team is that keep it the same, because I came in once, half the budget was there, that when we do our retreat in January, that will help us to create your goals and objectives for us to do the funding and financing going forward and not to have, you know, major increases coming up this year, but to find the things that you are working on. So, I know we'll be able to really look at and identify what your goals and objectives, with me being a part of the entire budget process the entire time. And so, that's why we were at the same, pretty much where we are now, with some increases that will identify in the letter that will come to your attention before the final budget reading.
Okay. All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Our second resolution is a resolution, public hearing, a resolution tentatively adopting the budget for fiscal year October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022 for the City of Daytona Beach, prescribing the net sources of revenue in an estimated amount of $278,835,224, setting forth expenditures and transfers in the amount of $278,835, $835,224, of which operating expenditures total $212,179,829, transfers $52,452,779, and capital expenditures at $14,202,616, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any comments? Okay. All right, all, no comments, no questions? Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. And now, we're going to adjourn for the DDA.
Okay.
Okay. You can leave yourself.
All right, we, we are, we will adjourn for the DDA, and then we will return. You're going to lose. Go to McDonald's, you're going to get smoked.
Okay. So, moving on, we've already done item 9J and 10A under the administrative items, so we're going to move on to item 10B. And that is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to the Bellwood Commons Plan Development General, this is rezoning, an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Bellwood Commons Plan District Agreement, which regulates the development and use of 5.1 plus or minus acre site located at 1260 Bebel Road, allowing a portion of the site to be developed as a drugstore or pharmacy without drive-through service, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner May.
May. And I have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions in this first reading.
All right, no, no questions? Okay. Motion, a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
The public hearing is set for September 22nd. Moving on to our final agenda item is item 10C. It's the City Manager's Office, City of Daytona Beach Propose 2022 Legislative Priority Approval. This is a resolution. A resolution approving state legislative and federal issues as priorities for fiscal year 2022 and providing an effective date. And Mr. Hardy Smith, Government Relations Administrator, to report.
Hello, Mayor, members of the Commission, Hardy Smith, Government Relations Administrator. Tonight, we have, have before you a list of proposed state and federal legislative issues. And if you think this is kind of like Groundhog's Day, and we're kind of doing this all over again, and you just did it, you'd be right, because a lot of all these, most of these issues are going to look very familiar. This list is built on your previously stated priorities that you either wanted to support or have us go make happen or try to defend the city against. And it's, it's a recurring list. The issues that we see at the state level and the federal level never really seem to go away. They're always with us. So, we have to always continuously be vigilant. The state, I wanted to call, especially call your attention, and, and for tonight, this is a proposed list. The ask of you is to please take a look at the list, please provide your, offer us, or let me try to address any questions you might have. There may be items that you want to take off, or items you'd like to add. And then the final list would be the list we move forward with. I wanted to call your attention to two items on the list. There are two appropriation requests that with your approval, we would be submitting to the state legislature. Both of these items, and you have handouts on those in your packet, both of these are considered must-have priority items by our utility. Both of these items, one is a $2 million request, and one is a $1 million request. And these are items that the city will have to move forward with in the very near future from a financial standpoint. Commissioner, I can give you the two handouts. That will.
It's in the back up.
Yes, it's in. And then, both of these items, again, one item is going to be a $2 million request, and the other item a $1 million request. These are items that the city is going to have to take on financially. So, we see in the upcoming legislative session, an opportunity to try to recoup some of, some of this cost that the city is going to have to incur. The, with your approval of moving forward with these, to these particular appropriations requests, I thought you might like to understand what the process is after, after your approval. The legislature now has a very old and very involved process, so that each appropriations request that a city or a county or another organization might make is a, becomes a standalone legislative bill. So, we would, with your approval, we would work with our local delegation, we would get a sponsor for our bill, and appropriation bills start in the House, so we would need a House sponsor. The bills go through the full appropriations process. So, you write up the bill, you file the bill, you get a bill number, you go through committee hearings, you go through budget negotiations, and all of that. And if you survive on the House side, then you go to the Senate side and start all over again. And if you survive on the Senate side, then the House and the Senate have budget reconciliation negotiations, and then in the tournament, Mayor, you get to the governor for the championship. And you have to survive the veto process with the governor. That's the way it works in the state on the appropriations process. The startup, and, and also your, whatever the approved list is after tonight, we will be presenting to the Volusia County Legislative Delegation at its annual meeting on October the 6th. Excuse me. The startup of the legislative session actually starts this month with committee meetings. Now, this is kind of an interesting thing because the official session doesn't start until January. So, this is like the preseason, this is the warm-up to the big game, but the scoreboard is, you're putting points on the scoreboard. So, even though the official session hasn't started, committee meetings are official. They count. So, we'll be very involved in being, tracking activity in the sessions, the committee meetings, which run all the way through December. The session starts on January the 11th, and it's scheduled to end this year on March the 11th. From a legislative standpoint, we play offense and we play defense. And you have to have both offense and defense going at the same time. We'll be working with our local delegation, we'll certainly be working with the outstanding leadership of the Volusia County League of Cities, with the Florida League, we'll be working with our state lobbyists, and we do all that same process on the federal side as well. In addition to the list that's before you tonight, it's proposed projects, excuse me, just getting over a cold, that's all that's good. We'll be actively monitoring for new issues that pop up, and they always do. And we'll be bringing those back to you if there's some special action that we need to take, and to make sure we have your, your guidance and input for anything that needs to happen. Any questions on the proposed list of priorities that I might be able to try to answer?
Does anybody have any questions? This, but, no questions, not bad. You have anything to add to that?
No, just if there are items to be aware of that we need to submit before our legislators, please get that back to Hardy. But throughout the session, January the 11th, the potential will be there for some of us to travel and represent you all, but definitely if there is anything that you want us to add, that you are aware of, that you've been dealing with, one of the things we will be talking about after we have our task force committee meeting on September the 29th, our special task force, we'll be taking some stuff up to our local delegation of how we deal with special events in beach communities. And so, that will be something that we will be adding to the, our legislative priorities to communicate how do our law enforcement individuals can deal with closing down streets and dealing with laws that are unsanctioned in our communities. And we want to make sure that when we do that, it will not just be for our local delegation, but it will be for those communities that are tourist destinations, so we can get support from Miami to Tallahassee and also Daytona, because we want to make sure that those delegations in other communities support our efforts, and that's what we're going to be focusing on, not only Daytona Beach with how we deal with special events, but all of those beachside and tourist communities. So, provide that to us.
What's the timeline that we have to have, if we have anything we want you to look at?
Commissioner, it's right now.
Right now, okay.
And let me just, I mean, I don't want to be flip about it. September 13th is the deadline, which is next Tuesday, I think, maybe Wednesday, but that's the deadline for having our information to the delegation to get on their agenda for October the 6th. And, and what we, what we want, and this counts, by the way, just kind of pulling the curtain back, let you know how some of this stuff works. This counts as a public hearing. So, when we fill out our paperwork for the legislature, that's one of the first things they ask, has this item been discussed in a public hearing? So, if you add something tonight, it counts in the public hearing. If you give it to me tomorrow or between now and the 13th, we don't get that correct. Now, you still can, and we can not like fatal, but we're.
And our key thing, our key thing with this is the, the presentation that Hardy will make at the local delegation will be great, but we're going to put together a packet that we can send to not only our local delegation, to other members of the legislation, legislators that we have partnerships and relationships with in other communities. So, when, if you don't, if it doesn't get on by next Tuesday, we're still going to take those things, we'll bring it back to the Commission to prove that this is something we want to take, because we have all of the, before we go to Tallahassee, and we're going to create a document that is our legislative priorities, that we can take to Tallahassee, but not only Tallahassee, to Washington DC also from a federal level. So, if you have something that you can't get to Hardy by next Tuesday, we still have time, because our information will go to Tallahassee as well as we work on committee meetings, but we're just trying to get this stuff approved. So, when he makes his presentation on October the?
October the 6th.
6th, they are aware here locally.
Okay. And you mentioned something about the task force. I know Representative Tom Link is going to attend, if he's in town, most likely will be, and Senator, Senator Tom Wright as well.
Yeah.
And I know they are working on something, district for our noise ordinance, because a lot of, I guess, our municipalities don't want to use it because it doesn't stick. And I was also told, I don't know if I misunderstood what you just said, about our state road? We have control of that on A1A.
That is correct.
Okay.
Our goal, however, is, is similar to when there are legislators throughout the state, that there's a law that can be put in place easier, and that's why we think getting the support from all of those tourist destinations. As the chief, Young, has stated, Miami has the same problem with invasions. So, if we can get the local delegation from Miami, that's having this problem, to sign on Senator Wright, or Lee, or Webster, all of their stuff, it makes it easy when you have people on both sides to get things in Tallahassee. And that's why we want to make sure that our issues and concerns, it, it goes across the board.
Across the board, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So we need a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second?
No, we don't.
Didn't we have a motion in a second?
No.
Second.
Commissioner Reed is the motion. Commissioner Kent too. Door's opening, okay. We got a motion, we got a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign, motion carries five zero. Commissioner Henry was.
And for the record, I didn't have speakers for this item. Item on the agenda tonight.
Okay, we move to our commission comments. Start with Commissioner May.
I just wanted to let the residents know in zone three that most likely this month they'll be seeing me come around. I'd like to get some input from them one-on-one to how they think their particular precinct can be helped by the money that we're receiving, each commission is receiving for the CARES Act. And so I'd like to speak with them one-on-one, so they expect to see me in your different areas in the month of September. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great idea. Commissioner Kent too?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. First, I would like to thank everyone on the commission for the Veteran Museum. It means a lot and I think this was a great small token to our veterans, especially after losing 13 of our soldiers in Afghanistan. And thank you Drew and Mr. Jagger for working on that. The next thing I just want to put out there, on September 21st, between nine and one, the city will be partnering with Family Health Source at the Daytona Beach Racing Card Club, which is known as the Dog Track at 960 South Williamson Boulevard. And we will be doing, giving out vaccines with also a $50 Walmart gift card.
Awesome, awesome. What day is that?
That'll be September 24th, first, excuse me, nine to one.
Okay, and you guys will get the, get the flyers out so we can broadcast that. Okay, good. Great.
Oh, I have one other thing. We've been having some problems at the Walmart on Bevel Road and I'm all for bus benches. And we have a lot of people that are actually doing drugs out there. I mean, trash is everywhere. I know code enforcement and everyone's working very hard on it. But that bus bench that's sitting there, I think causes a problem. And I wanted to see if Mr. Feature could contact the county and see why we can't have our Vought Train pull up to Walmart and pick up and drop off. They do it in Orman Walmart, they do it in Port Orange Walmart. Why are we the only Walmart that can't have curbside pickup?
What's the exact location, you said which Walmart?
That is on Bevel Road. I don't have the exact address. But I, if Vought Train can pick up at all the Walmarts, I don't see why we can't pick up at Daytona. Yeah, but at Walmart, they actually pull in. Correct. And they do it in Port Orange, well, they're only Walmart. So. The H chair, excuse me. Commissioner Reed is very good at correcting me on that one. And that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Henry?
First thing is, I didn't see our vaccination date in the little flyer here. So we must have gotten, forgotten.
No, Ms. Goodman had reached out and she was waiting on some finalizations in reference to the gift cards and that were coming. So that's the thing. So I'll make sure she follows up with you. Tried to reach out to some individuals and I know Drew her, but, because the date was coming up like the 18th and they hadn't finalized what type of gift card was going to be.
Okay.
She didn't forget about you.
Okay, thank you. So just wanted to remind everyone that, 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 that date is coming up. We will be, we will have vaccines available for children only ages 12 to 17. We're working on an all-inclusive event, so we want to have some dogs and drinks available for the children. So I need to know how we would go about doing that with using some of the Bike Week funds. Hot dogs and chips and drinks for the children in addition to their gift cards.
Is there someone else that is a direct person you want them to work with or just call you?
Malcolm.
Malcolm, okay.
So we're setting up some dates for the Santa Run, getting ready for some dates for the Santa Runs. Just wanted to invite any other commissioners that were interested in doing a Santa Run in their zone. Now is the day, time to start getting a date available because you have to have the police department where they can do the traffic and they can, the police officers will come, the fire trucks will come. I think the Tortugas sent their mascot out. So if you're interested in doing a Santa Run, now is the time to start planning that. Malcolm said he didn't want to leave anybody of, that wanted to participate in the Santa Run.
What was the date on that?
We haven't put our date on the calendar yet, so we're going to see what day is a good day with Chief and some other people at the police department that Malcolm has been working in. And then we'll have our date available, but I was just thinking if we all take one Saturday or Friday, whatever day, Sunday, that you want to do your Santa Run so that we all don't have it on the same date.
And what does that entail? They're just riding through the neighborhoods, their Santa?
Their Santa, Santa rides on the back of the fire truck.
Rosie?
No. The real fire truck. And they just go around, they blow the horn, they throw candy out to the kids. The kids all sit outside of their house and it's just like Santa Runs around their neighborhood.
It's a night, it's basically a night parade. Cars wishing people, wishing people a Merry Christmas. It actually was quite eventful and celebratory last year. People come out and they wave and you know, it's just like a night parade going through the different communities.
You doing the Christmas parade again?
Oh, we hadn't talked about that.
Um, the, Ms. Goodman with the Leisure Services team, they are working to coordinate a date and time for the parade. So something will be coming to you all soon.
What is the cost per zone for that, for the Santa Run? Like what's the fee? Are we paying for it out of any funds or it's just something we're putting on?
We didn't have a fee, did we Malcolm?
We didn't have a cost for it per se. Last year, it was all donated time inviting out people. And the thing about it was, you know, we can have.
Come up to the DIES.
To make each zone different. Each zone doesn't have to have the fire truck. Each zone doesn't have to have A cars. It's designed for a zone.
Come up, Malcolm. Name and address.
Yeah, you got, they say you got to have time or not.
One of the, the beauty of it is it can be designed per zone. Our zone was a little bit bigger and a little bit wider, so we had the fire trucks and all that stuff because we did the Christmas parade last year. I think it'd be exciting if we do it per zone. Like we said, the recommendation is that every zone pick a Saturday leaving up to Christmas and just make it fit for that zone. Cookman's in, you know, that zone, we can get Cookman Chill Eaters on the flight or whatever, or whatever's.
Yeah, they go on the long Christmas break.
I'm just using as the example, you know, beachside, we can get your beach, you know, you can make it beachy. It's, it's really depending on what's going to incite, excite the kids in that area, the residents in that area, make it a little homey. So that is the idea. And we're, we're looking to, trying to figure out and put details to the idea.
I love it.
Homey.
All right.
So we have some street cleanups coming up. Cedar Highland, we're going to do Cedar Highland, Highland. We're also planning a meeting for Highland and we'll have, those dates will be coming up soon and we'll let everyone know. In October, we're doing a Madison Heights Street Cleanup and the date will be announced. And in December, we're looking to do a light up Zone Five where we'll light up our own Christmas tree at YSG and we will have the school come out and participate, the children to come out and, and dance or the band, the little drummers or whatever. So just doing some things to bring a little Christmas cheer this year in light of COVID. And I think that's, that's it. That's all my announcements.
All right, great. I should be looking for September 21st COVID vaccine and September 18th. Okay, so, and the one on the 18th, you have to remember that a part of the vaccine celebration and promotion, you can add a celebration into that, right? Well, Drew would have to, can because that's a part of promoting and trying to get people out to get vaccinated. So it doesn't have to be tied to Bike Week, even though I'm, I know, but I've read enough on these funds to almost be, be close to hanging out with Drew. Okay. You're welcome.
Well, Drew will get with Malcolm and Commissioner Henry on that.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to just extend my condolences to the, and the women in blue. It's been a real difficult, I mean, Chief, and Deputy Chief Whitick and women just, life happens. I keep telling them is, because he knew. This is a great flyer. The only thing is I don't see a time.
Yeah, I was thinking the same.
It's inside of this, but if we're going to pass this out. It's not on this.
Oh, that program, they were just handing you out in advance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they didn't put, give that to anyone. This is just a.
Yeah, y'all see that it's a program. It looks like it's going to be a great program. 9:00 AM Saturday. That's the mayor's.
Well, we're going to be walking to the, have to go, we're going to walk.
Where is this?
This is at, at the.
Midtown.
The mayor?
The minutes. Okay. Just want to remind you of our Midtown, he's the last of the two concerts. And this Saturday from 7:10. Then the Saturday after, United Midtown, sponsored by myself and the city manager. Games that, that will be there to support. Come on out with your board games, you know, trying to find something, you know, a lot of, and cooped up, their children's schools were closing, what have. Good cleaning amongst ourselves. So adults only, the manager thought, I can say that. And then, home for a little while, we need volunteer, offer tour guides for the cows here in Daytona. September, they're here if you'd like to volunteer. When it comes, please sign up for that. They need folks regarding that. I believe that concludes my comment.
All righty. Commissioner.
We're welcoming back the museum. Keep to the commissioners who helped so much. On 7:00 AM at number one fire station.
Okay, October 4th. Okay, I'm not, but I, I know, do that, but I'm, the Veterans Museum, very happy. Mayor's Fitness Challenge, Tuesday, is pretty much at. So we, selecting applicants who participate Zoom because we're trying to be COVID. So if you want, you can. Most of the session, join will. Has to see me dance. But more, I can, the reality is I'll be. And my wife, I didn't show up. So I'm in it this year. There is a $500 prize for the champion and $250 for second place and $125 for third place. Obviously, Goodman do a phenomenal job, great sponsors, community. We give away several hundred. And this year will be no different in terms of your people's. Really a great. We have vaccinated through initiative, sponsor, community. 160 vaccinated today, got their second shot in the mid. Now at 200, been fully vaccinated. And then tomorrow, we will be at the Sneble Center. A plan to get shot and their gift. So that's. Fourth at 11:00 AM. That. Will be unveiled at the News Journal Center. Is probably the most anticipated in the history of our city. Should be very moment and serious because we want as many people to see the statue as she's been on the beach as possible. And so one of the reasons that it's during that time is that. And if I'm not mistaken, is found. Part of the reason I do it that day. Obviously the founder of Athum University. So I, I'm excited about it. My final note is. At least the part. Each of you. That it's really to work with COVID. Because there's nothing really planned about COVID. Elected chose to address COVID in a different way. Resound way. I, I think that. From a. We didn't get everything right. We've tried and grown and deal with COVID, still doing that. Commend you all for and taking this seriously. Because as we see. And institutions themselves, they're serious, we should. That about ourselves. So congratulations, pleasure to work with you. And that concludes, manager.
I do want to share as you brought up Drew's team from there playing a very good tournament. So we hope that Daytona, PM on Saturday, there will be seats available. The process, all commissioners, we are asking, thinking about how your fun. Meeting, no. We will go over. We will go over and bring it back for meeting of no we your have to and forth. So you having reference what's legal. Please get in touch with Drew, but we want to have 5 o'clock consensus, bring it back to the so we can and not have to go back the first meeting in um solidify do pass out. We job always document thank why Daytona Beach. This position vacant five years. Staff you to create something. And I will say the most important thing some of my marketing and ground communications team and we have this sent it out and we are from throughout the country is to get someone help us economic engine element. Only when people see redeveloping certain area. Not redeveloping just for the, the little four to five all out of we grow really community of choice and not an option. You just anybody economic director, send individuals that some what they want. Say because they will work me oversee development economic development opportunities for the city working different name. This person be from, you know, we'll all the way over to Peninsula drive to and, and I said the bringing staff the team, they work hard on making sure um September 20th is a special event task discussion. Ocean sizing items. Money paper, but September 29th at the Ocean Center. Meeting will be facilitated itself, the mayor chief of police. Also my first one the days, what we have looking at our, our, some of operations. Any new staff member, everybody that's for that are here on a great job. We're gonna the things we cases we had and some of the zoning and so the will probably come to you all in the next would also retreat. Swap strength opportunities and threats. They're all elected officials. Um, the mayor um commission in January is the date. Some dates out for that community community different zones. So that those meetings brought you all retreat. On our goals and objectives. So I think great job do, but we're gonna, we're gonna that a team are in here, he neighbor group. But I will be bringing the redevelopment I think this is the last one of the groups that we in she reminds me that they know. She sends me a longer email. But we're trying to going stations, different community. Um, we're that you're trying be transparent. And I the city be very engaged. Retreat mayor for you all and, and they'll be able to all I report. Primary um so that's the next two weeks. That zone we to vote your voice. And if you don't you just
on the money. On the money. We, we 20 all want to
Okay.
Okay. Conclude on this boss, y'all. This boss. What's that? Community gets to talk at this time. Get the gamble really is boss. Yes, you get to talk. Start. That's what I'm talking about. That's Bob.
Yep, Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. One of the things that I'd like to say, better seats in here. If you put that in the budget, things are awful alike for a third grader. Try sitting in them for three and a half hours.
I concur.
While we reconclude our remarks. Anyway, just like to point out, as the mayor said, during COVID, we got some things right. And we got some things wrong. One of the things we got drastically wrong, the meeting of May 20th, 1920, or 2020. In that meeting, in six seconds, in the consent agenda with no notification to the public. Public land deeded to the public forever was given away based on a fraudulent application with incorrect facts that were not documented properly and were not substantiated. And yet, this council chose to vote in favor of giving away public lands that have been deeded to the public since 1926. We did that wrong. And again, I'm going to remind the city council that they should rescind that decision. The riparian rights for all the citizens on the beachside, and I do happen to live in Zone 1, which is highly taxed, but Park 4. I have to go to the other zones if I want to see a nice city park. It's unfortunate the representation in our area hasn't supported parks in our area over the years, but I hope that that will change in the future now that we have a new city manager. And one of the things that needs to be done right away is to reverse that decision. That was always public land. It was deeded public land. The application was false. Staff did not properly do their report as far, if you go back and read it, and I know, Mr. Fietzer, you weren't here at the time. But if you go back and reread it, staff improperly stated that there was no violation of the city comprehensive plan, and that is not true. Stated on page, I believe, 102 states that public access to the waterways will be tried be less than every mile. Right now, we have none. So that needs to be changed. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and I've talked to the mayor about this before, and I, I did say, and I'm sorry you misinterpreted, Daytona Beach is what it is. It's a tourist town. And as such, we have a lot of people from all over the place. And as such, they cross the roads different manners. We have a deplorable collection of crosswalks, and there's no citywide standard. And as I pointed out, we lost a citizen here earlier this year, and I don't want that citizen's death to be in vain. I would like to see a city standardization on that. And again, I would like to see a committee, and I have volunteered numerous times to improve it, and there are answers, as I've stated. Also, I talked to Commissioner May. An excellent recruiting opportunity. City.
Thank you, sir.
Do with possibly using the Citizens Academy to try to recruit some people interested in serving on different boards in the city. It's a very valid idea.
Thank you, sir.
And, and that's the point. Ms. Goodman has an excellent program, but it's been stagnant since COVID. And I would really like to put some
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colburn Kizner, and on deck is Tiffany Kizner.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Kinsler, 2318 South Peninsula Drive, and I'm going to concede my three minutes.
We, we don't do Nope.
Can't do that.
And I'll start. Take this off or no? All right. All right. So this is regarding resolution number 2020-120, the abandonment of the right-of-way of South Halifax Drive, which was approved on May 2020 during the height of COVID pandemic. The neighborhood of Bridgeport Heights, at multiple times, has attempted to contact you and other members of the city's administration individually and as a group regarding concerns of the abandonment of the 30 by 80-foot riverfront property since we became aware of it. We've made several, we've made multiple calls and in-person trips to the building, with the last being at least three weeks ago to discuss the matter with you. After informing the office what our appointment was regarding, we were never contacted again. The only response that we have received is that everything is legal. We ask, is it legal and right for all of the residents of Daytona Beach or just for two of our adjacent landowners? It is stated on the Bridgeport Heights subdivision deed that all streets, avenues, roadways, alleyways, and parks, as shown thereon, are to be there for public use forever. By definition of a park is a piece of ground in or near a city or town kept for viewing nature and recreation, which can be reasonably include boating, swimming, and fishing. The application for the vacation of the right-of-way is incorrect, false, misleading, and misrepresented. The application proposed, one, that the original purpose of the right-of-way was as an access point for the bridge, which in actuality, the original developers designated this as river approach for the upland, upland property owners and public as designated on the original deed page in the 1926, long before talk of a bridge. These riparian rights are deeded to the property owners of Bridgeport Heights. Number two, the right-of-way became a mechanism for vagrants to trespass onto the properties at 2314 and 2320 South Halifax Drive. There were no police reports citing vagrants filed, and we contest that if you not want people in your yard, then build a fence like everyone else. Number three, there were mangroves cut that were, that were to be protected, but were cut after the ordinance. Number four, another, another city requirement was to provide proof that the right-of-way is not now or in the foreseeable future needed for public use by the city or its residents, as stated in the Land Development Code, Section 3.4. It has been used by the neighborhood and citizens since the 1920s. There are 180 or so properties still with riparian easement rights that house residents of the city. Number five, there was no discussion with or letter sent as originally requested by the city to the property owners within 150.
My name's Lee Kinsler, Colburn Kinsler, and I live at 2318 South Peninsula, and that's my wife Tiffany. Thank you, by the way. Number six, in the city's comprehensive plan, it says there should be one river access point per mile, and an emphasis should be put on obtaining parks. You gave away for the sum of nothing, a piece of very valuable riverfront property that has been used by a park in our neighborhood since 1926. I believe the city, as owner or caretaker of the property, whatever you'd like to call it, has a, had a responsibility to its residents to protect these resources for us. In the case, in this case, the original developers designated the property as river approach, a place to approach the river for the purposes of navigation, commerce, fishing, bathing, back then, boating, all of which by definition, definition define a park. The two adjoining landowners who were granted the approach purchased their property with full knowledge that it was public property on either side, or public property. You should have made an effort to protect the public riverfront property for the public, as you've been entrusted to do by the people that voted for you. Ignoring the public outcries describing the violation of our rights with no explanation for over a year now is a failure and quite possibly negligent on the part of the city. And the city could be held responsible for judgments, reliefs, and damages. You should be looking out for all of the city, all of the residents of the city, not just the influential few, or in this case, only two. This whole thing stinks. You just gave it away in a consent agenda vote with no discussion. Mr. Mayor, you always speak of our city's progressive attitude and thinking. Put your money where your mouth is. As of now, you, Commissioner Trager, and all the rest have lost my confidence. You've lost that of my family and my neighborhood, and you've lost my vote, and I voted for the both of you. I urge you to address this issue with us openly and do the right thing.
Our next speaker is Sarah Metz, and on deck is Herman Laws.
Thank you, Sarah Metz, 444 Seabreeze Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm here to speak on the same topic. I did send a letter to everyone on this dais, including Mr. Jagger, excluding, however, Ms. Lamagna. So I don't know if you received that. I'm up here today is to support my neighbors, to support the efforts that they have made over the past year. And to clarify, I think there's been some miscommunication amongst the parties. I don't represent them in my capacity as an attorney, but I'm here as a resident of the city of Daytona Beach to express my dismay at how the city handled not only the issue of vacating that park, which the city has deemed a right-of-way, that's neither here nor there tonight. But what I would like to say is you've had not just me, not just Lee Kinsler and Tiffany Kinsler and Frederick Brown, who doesn't even live in the neighborhood. I believe you heard from Marjorie several meetings ago. You've heard from other members of the community. You've got 60 different people that were on, that signed the letter that we had sent out to you on July the 14th, letting you know, this is a problem, and you haven't responded. There's been silence. We had one commissioner, Ms. May, came out to actually view the property and speak with us. So more than anything, we don't want to be ignored. We've been ignored. Thank you for coming out to at least speak with us about it, but what we would like is not just silence on an issue where if this is going to be a, I, I've read the article in the, in the News Journal about your town hall meeting, and what is this city going to be? Is this city going to be a city that gives away valuable riverfront property to the two riverfront property owners that already have access? Or is this city going to be family-friendly, tourism-friendly? Is it going to provide public resources like riverfront property? Sure, it's only a 30-foot wide piece of land. I get that. But Sunset Park is sure a beautiful way to spend your evening outdoors, enjoying the beauty of our area. Thank you for the recent sidewalks in my neighborhood, but no amount of concrete is going to make up for giving away that beautiful piece of property or absolutely nothing, and with no response at all. So if you haven't received the July 14th letter that I sent, I'll be happy to rescind it. I'll be happy to rescind all of the names of all of the people, all of the constituents who have voiced concern about this. And if you'd like to talk about it further, thank you. I appreciate that. And if not, well, you know where we all stand. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Herman Laws, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Thank you for having me. My name is Herman Laws, 517 Braddock Avenue. I am a professional snook fisherman. I've been doing this since my first fishing lesson in 1959 by my father. Recently, I have been told by the police last night that the Orange Avenue Pier, under the Orange Avenue Bridge, has been closed. Now, I fish every night, and I have grandsons and granddaughters. Now, I fish every night, and I have grandsons and granddaughters and nieces and nephews that I am teaching the art of snook fishing, which requires fishing at night. The bridges here are unsafe. I have fished every bridge in this town. I have been taking bottles thrown at me. I've been hit by beer, everything, bricks thrown at me, gunshot, people coming by shooting at night. I can't take my loved ones there. I can't take my kids there. I can't take, definitely won't take my grandkids there. The safest place you have for me to take a child or a loved one, and I'm not just speaking for me, I'm speaking for hundreds of people that utilizes that dock, that pier under the Orange Avenue Bridge. Now, as of last night, the police are running us off. This is unfair. We pay taxes. We need a safe place at night to take our kids, a safe place for me to teach the art of snook fishing, and we demand that you all do something about this. These bridges are not safe for us to take our families up on at night. We just got to have a park, a decent park, where we can enjoy the outdoors, just the way I was taught when I was six years old, 1959. I want to be able to take my grandkids down there and not be harassed, not be targets of people riding by throwing stuff at us. So please consider, do what you have to do. I can get, I can fill this room with children, mothers, people from all walks of life, where people want to enjoy this beautiful scenery you have under this Orange Avenue Bridge. Thanks for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So that's actually in Zone 3, so I live right there, and that's where I live, in Zone 3. So I'm the commissioner for that area. And the police have been making regular rounds in the morning time, first thing in the morning, at like 6 o'clock, they're there, they're stopping, they're there in the evening time.
Commissioner, you're going to have to have a conversation with him after the week.
I talk to the police, I fish every night.
But we can't just have a conversation like that. You and her just can't have.
Sorry. I was, sorry.
You don't have to take, she'll just talk with you after the meeting or.
I'm not allowed to respond. Not allowed to respond.
We really need to look at this a whole lot further. Because there's a lot of at-risk kids that I work with that need to be on that board instead of on the street corner.
I'll speak to you afterwards. I'll make a point of it.
It is.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grantville Avenue. I was at that meeting, and at no point was it mentioned that it was supposed to be permanently a park. Just said that they were vagrants, and they wanted to give away the land because they wanted to get rid of the vagrants. That was it. I really think we should look at it. Secondly, 2.7% tax increase, I don't remember the last time we did a tax increase. I remember the 27% big time, but I don't remember one since that. So if we're going to raise taxes, there should be some numbers, some reason, and there has been absolutely no numbers. Ruth asked, how much did we gain? The county gained $5 million in additional taxes from the development, new development. What was our gain from new development? Nobody knows. So that, we need to know that it's public, and it's going to be too late for the next meeting, because if, if they want to discuss it, it should have been now. People should know ahead of time. So I think we, we really should make that known. Also, you discussed a mile and a half. Do you realize that it's only seven blocks from, for Midtown, east-west, and it's less than two miles north or south? You can only put one project in all of Midtown, and if you put a project in Midtown, you can't put a project in Downtown because it's less than a mile and a half. So I would ask you to think about having a map drawn, put a, a, a pen in the middle of Midtown, put a mile and a half, and see how much it really covers. It's a drastic coverage, so it really eliminates Downtown and Midtown from having any additional locations. The rec center, we talked about the rec center for three or four years now. It's dropped. I don't know what, what's happening with it. So if you could, some information on, on that. And also, there was an RFP for the Breakers Park and the land that we own up at, off of Ocean Avenue. I don't know what's happening on that. I don't know where we're at. That's something that would affect the beach site big time. Also, with regard to parks on the river, there'd be a great park on the river if we went underneath. The ISB Bridge, if we have, and we should have, a walking up and down the ISB. Also, there should be walking up and down Seabreeze. It'd be great to put a park underneath Seabreeze Bridge. There's plenty of land there. I would, the residents and those condos would love to have a dog park there. There's a plan for a park when they wanted to put the Marina down there. I think that that's a perfect area for a park.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson. On deck is Malcolm Williams.
Marjorie Johnson, Daytona Beach, Florida. I would just like to thank the city manager for meeting with me to address some of the problems I've been having here with the city and also the Amvets. They're trying to get that building open again, and he met with me and some of my colleagues, and he's doing a wonderful job. We need more access to our mayor, which we don't have, Paul Reed, he don't have any access to them, but he is setting an example for all of you to follow. And I was also happy to see in the paper today that police chief, Jakari Young, is going to have a diversity claim for police officers. I think this is critical and is key with, with what we need here in our community. We need all of our residents treated with dignity and respect. And I've had some problems at City Hall myself, which I've never had when all the other mayors was here, you Banks, Kelly, Paul Carbonilla, Asher, Richie, or any of them. I was at City Hall, and I was abused. I was asked to move to the second row. I moved to the second row, I was harassed by some of your employees. I'd just like to say that unprofessional conduct by city officials and clerks will not be tolerated here in City Hall. It is unlawful discrimination and harassment to come and harass me about where I'm going to be set, and I'm a taxpaying citizen. You're here to do the people's work, and your clerks and, and your city officials should not be abusing our taxpaying citizen. And this has been going on. We had policemen come over and harass me. I had someone who was running for office. I had the acting president of the college that was sitting there. They're telling lies, and somebody's sitting in a little kid's lap and bringing the police over there to harass me. You cannot harass me out of City Hall. I was here, and you got here, I'll be alone after you are gone. So this diversity training need to take place here also at City Hall, and you need to correct some of these problems. Giving away our city property to these people, cutting deals under the table. I spoke several times at these meetings concerning that. We need to get this fixed. You do not want our city property given away. It's a great day that you are bringing our veterans museum back to the city of Daytona Beach. I have all of my people in the military, my father, my son, served 28 years, my brother Welton, served 26 years, and serving this country is a good thing. It should have never been taken out, but I'm delighted that you're bringing it back, the museum, city of Daytona. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams, and on deck is Matt Reinhardt.
Good evening, Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby. I want to say this, this commission has grown beyond means in the past couple of years, especially this year with COVID. We've seen you guys operate with a lot of complaints with no help, no citizens' help, I guess I can say. And we've seen you guys operate now, well, I personally seen you guys operate now with more citizen involvement than ever before. It's, it makes a great difference. So I am appreciative of the open door access that we have had to each and every one of you or those who have been, I've reached out to. I want to say that to say this, as citizens, we have pretty much asked and have been receiving almost everything we could ask for. So now it's time for us as citizens to make sure that we set the bars higher in our own selves and our own communities. I am pleading for those people, especially in Zone 5, speeding is an issue in our community. That's nobody's fault but ours. There's some issues on certain streets on Essex and Derbyshire that we're pleading. We don't want to see anybody else get hurt or anything become major. So as citizens of our own communities, I am pleading that we have those conversations and see if we can change that on our own. That's something the city cannot do. That's something that we have to do for ourselves. I do want to correct something that I said earlier. What was the cost for the center run? I personally did not know, don't know the cost of the center run, but I want to say whatever cost that was, was secured by the police and the fire department. I don't want to, to exclude them out. They did work with us last year and, and made it happen. Also, the citizens in Zone 5, again, we want to just say we're appreciative to Public Works. It has been looking very well in our area on Jimmy Ann and Clyde Morris, and we're looking to do something particularly special for our Public Works Department in our area. I'm working with the Public Works Department now to kind of facilitate something of that nature. Also, with the, with the state legislators and our federal priorities, we're going to, I'm personally asking is that we put more emphasis on exactly what those priorities are so that we as citizens can get involved. We want to make sure that we're doing our part, again, to make sure that we are backing up our, not only our commissioners, but our city, and making sure we're doing our part to help push Daytona forward. I am glad that we've kind of shadowed away from the world's most famous beach type of slogan and put the emphasis on the world's most famous Daytona Beach, where the citizens do feel like we are engaged, we are involved, and we are making a difference. So I appreciate all of you guys. Thank you. See y'all in two weeks.
Our next speaker is Matt Reinhardt, and on deck is Stephen Miller. And Mr. Reinhardt, I know your address is protected, so you don't have to say it.
Oh, thank you. Matthew Reinhardt, protected address. Thank you very much. I know I've been up here numerous times before talking about the Georgetown subdivision and the traffic issues, then submitting the form to speak. I had a very productive conversation with Chief Young regarding the stop sign issue. Most of it revolves around the stop signs. A couple of years back, you graciously helped us out with putting in speed bumps, which helped until traffic decided they wanted to make new roads through people's yards, which they're still doing. The discussion was made at our HOA meeting, which I'm the vice president of, to possibly talk about or get with you on the, the strips, the bump strips or whatever near the stop signs. I really don't know what the answer is. I'm hoping that Chief Young, with what he wants to implement, will help resolve this issue. I want to thank you for what you've done in the past, and I know that budget constraints are always an issue. I retired as a warden, as you know, 31 years at the jail. Budget was huge, and I know that he cannot supply that personnel out there in that area if he doesn't have the personnel. We've spoken with Daytona Beach police officers, live in the area, they've actually parked their cars on the road. It still persists. They know he lives there, so they're just flying by. And as a result, I'm looking at the picture of the ducks. We've had three that have been killed within the last few weeks where people are flying by, where we have to scrape the ducks up and get rid of them. So it, it hasn't stopped, and it's a major cut through, if you're not aware, from Bevel Road to Big Tree. And it's, it's just, stop signs don't exist to them. They just, you know, haul through them. So on the speed bumps, like I said, they make new roads. So if you can think of anything that would help, we certainly would entertain it. We would love some more ideas. So thank you very much for what you do. I appreciate, appreciate you, Stacy, for all the, all the help you've done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Stephen Miller.
Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street, beautiful Daytona Beach. I'd like to start out by saying I truly love Daytona Beach, and, and I think a lot of other people do as well. And, and I love the most diversified commission I have ever seen. Five wonderful ladies in the city and Honorable Mayor. You know, I've heard on a separate occasion, the citizens are talking about how happy they are because they have access. And congratulations, Mr. Fietzer, 100 days on the job. They have a rancher out of here, and we know that every two weeks you have to prove yourself, and you seem to be doing a fantastic job. Exactly. And I also wanted to congratulate Stacy Cantu, commissioner from Zone 4, because she was telling me that she was going to get a museum here with the veterans, and so well done, and with the help of her comrades on this commission. We love to see progress and folks working together, and that's, that's very, very important. I try to walk now in Midtown Park, MLK Park. In fact, one of my friends was there, and he wanted me to tell you guys to check out the bathroom for the females. It's very hard to flush the toilets. I don't know what kind of push buttons I'll have there, but if you could check that out, that would be very appreciative. I stated to you the last time I was here that I still feel that John Nicholson and Marjorie Johnson should have permanent seats here at the city commission meeting because they love our city so much, and you don't have to boo me. But, and, and last but not least, I was going to invite everybody to come to our Neighborhood Watch Meeting. We have a special, special guest speaker, our city manager, and we also invited the business individuals in the Midtown redevelopment area. So we're really looking forward and seeing you guys, and thank you very much for what you all do and the sacrifice you all make for the city.
Mr. Miller, where's that park? Where's that toilet not flushing? You said the MLK Park.
Yeah, MLK Park, over by, close to where the pool area. We have a restroom over that area, Cypress Street Park.
Oh, that's not MLK?
Well, that's not MLK Park.
Oh, you mean the Cypress Walking Park, the MLK Walking Park?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Great, I'm glad we got, understand it. Thank you.
Good night, Daytona Beach.